All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to applicable law and by my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is conducted via conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. Will the aldermen please make sure their microphones are unmuted when your name is called? Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Alderman Lasbada.
Here.
Alderman Hopkins.
Alderman Hopkins, present.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Aldman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Aldman Beal.
Yep.
Sorry, Aldman Beal.
At the tone, please record your message.
And I apologize, I'm at City Hall.
And Madam Clerk, folks, can you please mute your phone? We're getting somebody's voicemail message. Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Zalaski Garza.
Present.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Cardness.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Aldman Burke.
Here.
Aldman Lopez.
Here from West Englewood.
Alderman Coleman. Aldman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Coleman is present.
Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Aldman O'Shea is present. Aldman Taylor. Aldman Brookins.
Here.
Aldman Brookins is present. Aldman Rodriguez.
Present.
Aldman Rodriguez is present. Aldman Tabarez.
Present.
Aldman Tabarez is present. Aldman Scott.
Present.
Aldman Scott is present. Aldman Sichu Lopez.
Presente.
Aldman Sichu Lopez is present. Aldman Maldonado. Aldman Burnett.
Present.
Aldman Burnett is present. Aldman Urban.
Present.
Aldman Urban is present. Aldman Talafaro.
Present.
Aldman Talafaro is present. Aldman Royas.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Aldman Royas is present. Aldman Cardona.
Present.
Aldman Cardona is present. Aldman Wagispak.
Here.
Aldman Wagispak is present. Aldman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Presento.
Aldman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Aldman Austin.
Here.
Aldman Austin is present. Aldman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Aldman Ramirez Rosa is present. Aldman Vegas.
Present.
Aldman Vegas is present. Aldman Mix.
Present.
Aldman Mix is present. Aldman Spesato.
Expesato is here.
Aldman Spesato is present. Aldman Nugent.
Present.
Aldman Nugent is present. Aldman Vazquez.
Present.
Aldman Vazquez is present. Aldman Napolitano.
Present.
Aldman Napolitano is present. Aldman Riley.
Present.
Aldman Riley is present. Aldman Smith.
Present.
Aldman Smith is present. Aldman Tunny.
Present.
Aldman Tunny is present. Aldman Gardner. Aldman Kapamen.
Present.
Aldman Kapamen is present. Aldman Martin.
Present.
Aldman Martin is present. Aldman Osterman.
Present.
Aldman Osterman is present. Aldman Hadden.
Present.
Aldman Hadden is present. Aldman Silverstein. You know, I saw her.
Present, present.
Aldman Silverstein, I did see you. Anyone else that I missed?
Aldman Taylor is here.
Aldman Taylor is present. Anyone else? All right, Peter.
Your Honor, there are 47 members present.
Thank you. There are 47 members present. We have a quorum. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States. Thank you.
God bless America.
These words certainly have particular relevance given to the events of the last two weeks. So thank you all for joining me in that pledge. Please remain standing. The invocation will be delivered by Hazi Ansari of the Muslim Community Center. Sir, the floor is yours.
In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, thank you, Madam Mayor, the 39th Ward Alderman's Manta Nugent, the respected members of the city council and assembled guests. I greet you all with the Islamic greetings of peace and safety. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wawarakatuh. I'll recite the first chapter of the Holy Quran, which is called Al Fatihah. Literally means the opener, the most recited prayer for blessings and healings in Muslim traditions. Alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alaamin. Arrahmanirrahim. Malikiyaumiddin. Iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nastaa'in. Ijdinas sira'tul mustaqim. Sira'tal ladzina an'antayhim. Gairil maghdoubi alayhim walad zallin. Ameen. Let's pray. We begin in your name, oh Lord. You are the most gracious, the most merciful. All gratitude and praise belongs to you, oh God. You are the Lord of the universe, the beneficent, the merciful, the owner of the day of judgment. We do pray to you only, and we do seek help from you only. Our Lord, please guide us and our leaders to the right path, the path of those upon whom you bestow your grace. Oh our Lord, guide our city leaders to the right and just decision-making and effective execution. Bring our city together in peace, prosperity, and harmony. Let us be the light that we seek from you and make us the source of inspiration for our city, our state, nation, and the world. Oh the merciful Lord, protect our city, state, country, and the globe from this pandemic and the distress. We thank you, our Lord, for all your favors and blessings upon all of us, and we put our complete trust in you. May the peace and blessings be upon all the prophets and the righteous servants of God. Ameen. Thank you.
Thank you, Imam. At this time, we'll have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker today is Marilyn May.
Hi, good morning to the Honorable Mayor Lightfoot and to the esteemed members of the City Council of Chicago. Again, my name is Marilyn May, and late last year, I was asked to join the efforts of the Black Heroes Matter Coalition. And I joined because I remembered being a little girl growing up on the south side of Chicago in the Bronzeville neighborhood, wondering why the city's founder wasn't honored in a grander way, particularly in the downtown area of Chicago. And so again, I decided to support this initiative, and so I'm here this morning as a spokesperson for Martens International, whose objectives include bringing nations together through music and culture, also as a representative of the Black Heroes Matter Coalition, who are calling for the injustices to Jean Baptiste Pointe Du Sabo Chicago's founding father to be corrected and for the outer Lake Shore Drive to be renamed Du Sabo Drive. Now, we are also asking for a full city holiday, as you may know, and a major monument for Du Sabo, which we are in discussion with the city administration currently. Now, all three of our Du Sabo objectives are set with a timetable. And Madam Mayor, we first want to just thank you for recently taking time to listen to our calls for justice for Du Sabo and for your openness and for your help in trying to make these three objectives a reality. Along with the late Mayor Washington, your show of support in particular for Du Sabo's justice could be what is considered a major step in the right direction by a sitting mayor of Chicago. Now, we would like all the council members who may be a bit reluctant and voting for Du Sabo's justice to just look again at the About the City page of the City of Chicago's website, and which in part reads, "Originally settled by Jean Baptiste Pointe Du Sabo in the 1770s and incorporated as a city on March 4, 1837. Chicago developed from a small trading center on the shores of Lake Michigan to the vibrant modern metropolis of today." And so yes, we are talking about Du Sabo's trading post, which again was located in the downtown area. And so here we are, 240 years, and there's still not a major street, a monument, or a city holiday for this founding father, and we believe it's because he is or was a black man. Madam Mayor, the three Du Sabo requests petitions should be true.
Ms. May, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Carolyn Curry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, I am Carolyn Curry, a constituent of Calumet Heights, both the 7th and I always say the 7th and 8th Ward because I have known Aldman Harris and Aldman Mitchell since they were teenagers, and I go to both of them back and forth for everything. I have lived over here for 50 years. I taught one block from my home for over 30 years, and I am just overwhelmed with what is going on over here. And I know you guys don't want to hear, carjacking again, but that's what I'm coming for. It's personal with me. I had a brother who was carjacked and killed in 1997, and it's like it's happening every day. I need to know where our policemen are. Sometimes we go about and we don't see a police car for at least a couple of days. And then we see them because we know them personally, and they say that they have been reassigned downtown on Michigan Avenue and Rush Street, et cetera. I understand the golden goose because I pay taxes, but we need policemen back out here. I am receiving calls every 30 minutes on this, and you promised affordable houses, and we're getting vacant houses, vacant lots, Section 8, and these little monkeys, and I apologize to all primates, need to be back in school looking at their ages. Jim Fox needs to get on it. She needs to implement some kind of rule to corral these people. There are over 12,000 policemen in this city, and they are good people for the most part, maybe 100 aren't. But we need help out here. We are in crisis. This city is in crisis. And I know that most of them, like I said, belong back in school from their ages. So therefore, fascinate the teachers, put them up front. They are first-line workers also. And send these kids back to school. Some of them are doing it for games, some of them are... But they can do it. So please help us. We need help out here. We are in crisis. The city is in crisis. And I am hoping that this will not fall on deaf ears. Mayor, you came out here to Calumet Heights. Over 2,000 people showed up. We can't march anymore because of the pandemic or anything, but we are asking you.
Ms. Curry, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Rolando Rodriguez.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and members of city council, and thank you for taking the time to hear from our city. My name is Rolando Rodriguez, and I'm a co-founder and a current vice president of Jefferson Park Forward, a community organization. I'd like to voice out support for Ambrosia Homes' proposal for the reuse of the old firehouse located at 4841 North Lips Avenue. This proposed design incorporates significant community feedback provided over the last three years, particularly feedback from Jefferson Park Forward, the Northwest Chicago Historical Society, Preservation Chicago, and dozens of Jefferson Park residents. Ambrosia Homes, a local developer, has demonstrated their commitment to the revitalization of Jefferson Park and the preservation of our landmarks. Their sustainable design maintains and enhances the history of our community while including space for a committed Jefferson Park business, Lake Effect Brewing Company. Throughout the pandemic, Lake Effect, even with its own struggles, excuse me, has partnered with many other local businesses to help them drive revenue and keep everyone afloat until we return to normal. According to a note from Preservation Chicago, quote, "The facade restoration and setback addition on the upper floor maintains the historic integrity of the building and allows for increased square footage to make the project more financially viable. A brewery coupled with housing is an ideal solution for this building and has gained tremendous community support. Ambrosia Homes has the capacity and vision to bring this redevelopment project to fruition," end quote. "We hope you see the great opportunity this presents to reignite the Jefferson Park Business District, hopefully attracting additional businesses as we gain control of the pandemic and adding much-needed tax revenue to the city coffers." Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. Our next speaker is Maggie Daly Skozbakan.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and members of city council. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Maggie Daly Skozbakan. I'm a Jefferson Park resident and president of Jefferson Park Forward, an active neighborhood organization dedicated to creating a vibrant and inclusive community by driving positive change and advocating for economic development that builds upon the strength of our existing community. I am here to voice support on behalf of Jefferson Park Forward for Ambrosia Homes' proposal for the reuse of the old firehouse located at 4841 North Lips Avenue. JPF is supportive of development that increases economic activity within downtown Jefferson Park in a sustainable, environmentally-friendly way that supports urban living. In particular, we are pleased to see development that reuses and adapts existing buildings, particularly ones such as this with historic value to our community. The firehouse is the oldest public building still standing in our neighborhood. Ambrosia Homes developer, Tim Palmillo, who is also a resident of the northwest side, and his team have spent over three years working collaboratively with the Northwest Chicago Historical Society, Preservation Chicago, multiple neighborhood organizations, two different aldermen, and the Jefferson Park community to ensure a design that is, a design usage that is appropriate, pardon me. We feel that Ambrosia Homes' development plan best fits our vision of a strong and prosperous Jefferson Park. Ambrosia Homes has committed to a genuine restoration, adhering to the guidelines for preservation set forth by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, including setbacks on the upper floor, recreating the ornate cornice, and restoring the facade to clearly portray the building's original function. The building has not been occupied for almost a decade, and structural integrity continues to worsen. The design presented by Ambrosia Homes will preserve part of our legacy for our children, grandchildren, and all those who come after us. We ask that you move this ordinance forward now, as additional time and limbo could render it beyond repair. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Skozbakan, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mary Anselmo.
Hello, everyone. Good morning, I am Mary Anselmo, a board member of the Copernicus Foundation. I am speaking out in opposition to negotiated sale of the fire station owned by the city, located at 4841 North Lips. The Copernicus Foundation, as you know, is a not-for-profit organization for the last 50 years, which has given a boost to the vitality of the Jefferson Park and Northwest Chicago neighborhood. The fire station is located only 100 feet away from our campus. The Copernicus Foundation hosts The Taste of Polonia for the past 39 years. The Copernicus Foundation submitted its timely application to purchase the fire station, which was rejected by the Department of Housing as being incomplete. Prior to submitting its application, Copernicus served written requests upon the Department of Housing that it be permitted to commission an environmental study of the interior of the fire station so that we can complete a remediation plan and include it in the application. The Department of Housing refused to allow Copernicus access to the interior of the fire station, as is now indicating that the reason its application was rejected is because it did not provide the full plan of remediation or a definite timetable for the completion of construction. The three main reasons we believe this sale should be halted, we want an even playing field. Though many lies have been told about our lack of funds, we are able to finance this project. The 990 tax return that we provided with our application showed assets of $3.7 million. We can present the account showing that we have enough funds for acquisition and complete construction of the building. We are very good neighbors. If Copernicus does acquire the property, we will keep the property on the tax roll. The Copernicus Foundation has offered $300,000 for the property, plus its proposal to pay for any remediation that's necessary. While Ambrosia is paying one stinking dollar plus remediation costs, $300,000 would pay eight city of Chicago employees. All we ask is that you vote to defer this ordinance until the Copernicus Foundation or any other interested bidder be permitted full access to the fire station in order to develop a plan of remediation and submit a supplementary proposal for consideration by the Department of Housing and ultimately this committee. To this end, we have filed a lawsuit in the Circuit Court of Cook County arguing that the City of Chicago Department of Housing has violated our due process.
Ms. Anselmo, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Iwana Filipiak.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and members of the city council. My name is Iwana Filipiak. I'm the president of the Polish-American Chamber of Commerce. I am speaking out in opposition to the negotiated sale of the fire station owned by the city, located at 4841 North Lips to Lips LLC. Established in 1994, the Polish-American Chamber of Commerce is a non-for-profit organization. We are dedicated to fostering our members' business interests, educating and facilitating commercial contacts, and building relations. As the voice of Polish-American businessmen and women in the Chicago and metropolitan area, the chamber's goal is to serve their best interests and help influence decisions and actions which improve their economic vitality. The chamber members are businesses and organizations and individuals concerned with the socioeconomic climate of our community. Members include the thriving premier community of thousands of Polish-American business owners. We have joined together because we know we stand a better chance of getting things done when we speak as one voice. I am using our voice today to lend the chamber's support to the Copernicus Foundation in their quest to buy the abandoned city-owned firehouse just steps from the Copernicus campus. By acquiring the property, the Copernicus Foundation would undoubtedly strengthen in roots as a cultural community center in the neighborhood, which will further enable its desire to serve the residents of Chicago for generations to come. I am using our voice today to ask you to vote to table this ordinance until the Copernicus Foundation or any other interested bidder be permitted full access to the interior of the fire station in order to conduct an environmental study, develop a plan of remediation, and submit a supplementary proposal for consideration by the Department of Housing and ultimately this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Filipiak, for your comments. The next speaker is Reverend Karen Mooney.
Hello, good people. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot and council members, for allowing my voice to be heard. As elected officials, your days are full now. A pandemic rages, carjackings are on the rise. There is an economic crisis of disastrous proportions. You have a lot to do. Still, I wonder why you're not voting on a police accountability ordinance today? Really, is there too much else? If yes, what else has filled your calendars for over the last years and months? Why? Why has it never been the right time when even the mayor got our votes to get this done? We all watch the news, we hear the cases, corruption, torture, mayhem, overuse of force, wrong identity? Names like John Byrd, Jason Van Dyke echo right now in your minds, right next to the citizens that have been killed or impacted. Anthony Holmes, Laquan McDonald, Rakeea Boyd, Betty Jones, Angeline Young, and so many more. These people, these largely black and brown people matter. When will they get a voice in this chamber? I realize, it feels like chaos right now, but for those families and individuals, chaos started with a whirlwind of police misconduct, and it visits them daily. We are hearing a lot about accountability these days. Doesn't accountability start when people take the risk of listening? GAAPA contains the concept that those who are protecting us are held accountable to those who are served. We get a say in how accountability is assessed and what the consequences are. How police treat people matters. It matters if they are black or trans or politically different. It matters to our children, it matters to me. Surely, the people of Chicago deserve to know that they can count on the police to bring safety, not mayhem. Community-based accountability is not all that is needed. Training, reorganization towards mental health concerns, and more will need to be addressed as well. But community accountability is a starting place. I'm Reverend Kay Mooney, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Unitarian Universalist Advocacy Network of Illinois and the Community Renewal Society, standing for community-based police accountability. Good people, good people, you need to bring a vote on GAAPA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend Mooney, for your comments. Our next speaker is Abdul Khan.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and city council members. My name is Abdul Khan. I support Resolution R. 2020-583, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak in support of this resolution today. Today, I'm speaking to voice my concerns over the human rights violation in India under Mr. Modi's regime, either in the name of revocation of constitutional status of Kashmir or Citizenship Amendment Act, CAA, or Delhi program, or the inappropriate farmer's law, or it's the choking of freedom of speech to death. It has been almost a year and a half. On August 5, 2019, the BJP government in India under Mr. Modi's regimes scrapped a law that grants a special status to Indian administrator Kashmir without the consent of Kashmir people. And to avoid any protest, they imposed an indefinite lockdown and massive troop deployment throughout the disputed region. A direct code and call to action by the Human Rights Watch, Indian authorities should have immediate, should take immediate steps to protect rights by releasing political detainees, upholding the right to the freedom of speech, including withdrawing, including withdrawing the case against the journalists and activists, restoring the full internet access, and holding the accounts, and holding to account officials responsible for the right of violation. CAA has been, Citizenship Amendment Act, CAA, has been widely condemned throughout the world, including the United Nations Rights Commissioner, Michelle Bechlet, who has called this fundamentally discriminatory. The United States Commission on International Religious Freedom has called upon the US government to designate India as the country of particular concern or CPC. As one of the world's world's fourteen worst offenders of religious persecution because Indian Prime Minister, Mr. Narendra Modi's government, has been tolerating a systematic ongoing religious freedom violation, as defined by the International Religious Freedom Act. President Joe Biden recently said he has been disappointed by the measures that the government of India has taken with the implementation and aftermath of the National Register of Citizenship in Assam and the passage of Citizenship Amendment Act. He said these measures were inconsistent with the country's long tradition of secularism and with the sustaining of multi-ethnic and multireligious democracy. The farmers recently, like, there is currently a large protest in the human, this is probably the largest protest in the human history, which is taking place in India right now. Twelve million farmers marched to Indian capital, New Delhi, to peacefully protest. However, they were met with the police brutality, barricades, bar buyers, tear gas, and water cannons. U.S. lawmakers have voiced their support for the farmers agitating in India.
Mr. Khan, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. The next speaker is Wallace Gator Bradley. Mr. Bradley, are you there?
Mr. Bradley, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to first say, to God be the glory, and I'd say, good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and the members of the city council.
Mayor.
I salute you for owning up to your obligation to right a wrong and for meeting with Ms. Young. I also would like to say, I pray that you will support the city council members that wants to put together a committee that's dealing with risk management in reference to the law department, okay, to help check that pinstripe patronage. One of the things that concerns me is that now we have a chance to reach out to everyone in the community and listen to others that have programs from the grassroots level to help make the city better for all of us. Sometime you got to take what turned out to be a lemon and make lemonade for everyone. And now is the time for all of us to work together to support the mayor and what she doing, and for the residents to support the aldermen so that they can work along with the mayor to make everything right for everybody. And another thing, I think it's very important, Mayor, that you and the city council let the governor know that not only did you support that bill that was passed that was dealing with police issues, but asked him to hurry up and sign that bill, okay? That'll help make everything happen right for everyone to see that we are doing something, okay? And I just want to say, it's been a hard road last year for a lot of us that lost loved ones, and we all need to come together and work together as best as we can, because working together, united in peace, for the right causes and the right reasons, we get the right results. Again, I want to say I honor and respect you, Mayor. I honor and respect the city council, especially Alderman of the Thirty-Fourth Ward and Brother Bill. I hope y'all come together and help the poor man, part of the museum and that project that they trying to get to, trying to work on. And I know that we all can make this year a whole lot better than last year. And with that, Wallace Gator Bradley, president of United in Peace, known as the urban translator and the host of the Bradley Report, to God be the glory.
Mr. Bradley, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jamie Ryan Doyle.
Jamie Doyle, please press star six on your phone to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, you can hear me. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and the members of the Chicago City Council. My name is Jamie Lyons Doyle, and I'd like to thank you for hearing my comments today. In two thousand fourteen, the city council enacted an ordinance prohibiting the sale of commercially-raised puppies and pet stores. The city acted as a leader in animal welfare and inspired many other cities to follow in their actions. However, now, seven years later, we can see that the basic intention of this ordinance is clearly being ignored by some Chicago businesses. I come to you today to ask Mayor Lightfoot and the Chicago City Council to enforce the ordinance the city council passed in two thousand fourteen. In my opinion, not enforcing what the city council legislated in two fourteen, in two thousand fourteen lends to losing credibility in anything else the city council legislates today and the future. I don't think we want to set that kind of precedent in Chicago where some Chicago businesses just pick and choose what they foul and disregard the rule of law. In my opinion, and based upon my experience in animal welfare and rescue work, along with the documentation that's been reported by animal welfare organizations, Chicago Tribune, and numerous cited violations by Chicago Animal Care and Control, it is crystal clear that some businesses are disregarding the two thousand fourteen ordinance. Every indication tells us that instead, these stores are purchasing dogs from commercial breeding facilities, most likely the ones the Chicago Tribune and the Humane Society of the United States have exposed. So what is the problem with these facilities? Let me briefly explain. It is common sense that any breeder who had the best concerns for the puppies they bred would want to meet potential adopters and see who is going to care for the animal they bred. A reputable breeder or a legitimate rescue would never ship a dog across multiple state lines to a Chicago pet store for that store to sell the dog to the first person that comes with cash or credit in hand. Remember, at these stores, the only qualification you need to buy a dog is ability to pay fully or pay partially and qualify for a payment plan. It is no different than someone purchasing an appliance. So I urge some of the Chicago City Council members to not be unnecessarily influenced by these businesses. They're clearly displaying no respect for the ordinance you passed in two thousand fourteen. Instead, I proudly come to you today respectfully asking the Mayor Lightfoot and the Chicago City Council clearly, ethically, and morally do the right thing and simply follow the due process of your own two thousand fourteen ordinance and vote to pass Alderman Hopkins' Ordinance zero-two-zero-two-zero-two-eight-two-seven, the ordinance to close the puppy mill loophole today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Amina Ahmad.
Ms. Amina Ahmad is not here.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mohammed Asala.
Mr. Mohammed Asala is also not here.
Your Honor, the time allotted for the public comment period has expired, and there are no further speakers.
All right. This concludes the public comment. We're going on to resolutions. We have two resolutions today celebrating lives that impacted our community. A memorial resolution for Chicago Fire Department Lieutenant Dwayne P. Williams and a memorial resolution for Judge Albert Porter. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these two resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of respecting time today, we will forego the formal reading of the resolutions, and instead, I hear remarks from Chicago City Council members. The first memorial resolution is in honor of retired Lieutenant Dwayne P. Williams, who unfortunately was tragically murdered back in December. Joining us today are a number of members of Lieutenant Williams' family, and our chief sponsor is Alderman and Chairman Carrie Austin. So Alderman Austin, please begin.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. Thank you for allowing me to indulge in just a brief statement regarding an outstanding young man that adorned our community with a purpose, a purpose of help, to help those that were in need, to help the young adults to understand what life is all about. This young man gave his all to the community on where he lived and the Thirty-Fourth Ward as a whole. So it is with a heavy heart that we have this resolution for him. That doesn't really do justice to a young man that gave to the Chicago Fire Department for his many years, and to have given to his family to raise daughters, to raise outside sons, to raise children, to be better than what their community had allowed, rise above those things. This is what he had instilled in so many of us. Mayor Lightfoot, I'm grateful for your involvement in assisting the family with honoring this man's legacy. I know that the family have asked for a parade in April, but if they would indulge us, I know that you have asked that we move that to June or July, where his legacy can be go on while he rests in heaven. To his wife and children, it is sad for us in the Thirty-Fourth Ward that we have lost a giant. Hopefully, when we open up our new fire station, we can name one of the rooms after him. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. Please forgive me for that.
I won't even comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Austin, for your impassioned words. The chair recognizes Alderman Jim Gardner.
Please record me as president for the roll call.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this resolution. I'll make mine very quick, but from the heart, to Lieutenant Williams' family and to Lieutenant Williams, you were and you are my brother. You answered the call when you were asked to serve your city. You will always, we will always be proud of you, and I apologize that we failed you. May God, may God rest your soul, brother. God bless. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and I'd like to express my deepest condolences and my prayers to the Williams family. And I just want to thank them for lending us Lieutenant Williams for so many years. He spent his life dedicated to protecting the residents of this city, and it's my pledge to Lieutenant Williams' family that we will do all that we can to stop this senseless violence in the city of Chicago. Chicago has lost truly a great hero and a great servant to the residents of this great city. So I thank you so much, and again, my deepest condolences to you. You are constantly in my prayers, as well as those others that have lost their lives to senseless violence. And to my colleagues, I say that we really have to get a handle on carjackings and any other violence that's in this city, because it is costing lives. Fathers are lost, brothers, sisters, uncles, aunts, they're all lost to this senseless violence, and we have to stand up once and for all and do something about it. The Thirty-Fourth Ward, my condolences to you as well. I believe you have lost a gem in that ward. So thank you so much, Madam President, for this time to speak.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Pharoah. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. My condolences to the family. My colleague just put it so eloquently. I concur with everything he said. You know, we're so thankful for Officer Williams for risking his life for many years for people in our society, risking his life for folks he didn't even know, and then to have his life taken by someone he didn't know is such a tragedy. I pray for the family. I pray for those folks who also did the carjacking, that, you know, them and their families try to work this out and get these things together. I pray for our city. We need to get a handle on our young people. This is not a gang. This is serious business, and we need to do everything we can to make people feel comfortable to be able to get in their cars and drive in the city. I think especially his passing has really sparked, sparked a fire in all of us to be motivated to do everything we can to make sure folks are safe. So again, I want to thank the family for sharing him with the city of Chicago. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support the resolution to the Williams family. I don't know if you know or not, but before I was an alderman, I was a fireman, and although I didn't know Dwayne, I had many friends that knew him, many friends that loved him and respected him, so he was certainly an asset to the department, and I'm proud to say that he was one of my brothers back in the day, and I'm sorry for your loss, and I don't know what to say, and I don't want to stumble through anything, but I just want to let you know that Dwayne was loved by all and respected by all. So thank you for everything Dwayne did for the city, and God bless you and your family. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. I want to take this, um, others' fair, great honor and a pleasure to serve them when they were, when they was here from out of town. He raised four great scholar daughters, and it was easy to learn each one of their characteristics in only a week. They are identical to their dad. I want to, not only was he a good family man, I want to thank him for serving our country and, you know, and serving the city with dignity and honor for years and years over. Thank you for, Chairman Austin, for bringing this resolution to the city council, and thank you, Madam President, for all the work that you did to help prepare his funeral arrangements. Thank you so much. Thank you, Williams family, for lending him to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, just wanted to speak on this particular resolution. To see what we saw in video on television was just, just so bad on so many levels. To see a strong African-American man who has been a provider for his family, working with the community, working with our youth, and trying to develop other young, strong black men, to see gunned down in the streets of our city was just atrocious. Again, but to the family, thank you for lending him to us for the time that he was here. We pray for you, and we continue to wish God's blessings in this time of sorrow for your family. But again, we just want to thank you for being, for him being part of our city fabric, and please know that his loss will not be in vain as we, as members of this council, work to bring forward ways to deal with this issue of carjacking and understanding that our young people seriously need help, as this is not a game. There's no reset button in life, so we really have to work toward providing our children and our police the adequate resources they need to help deal with this situation. But again, to the family, we just want to thank you for lending him to us, and may God continue to bless you and your family. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. My condolences to Mr. Williams' family, the senseless violence that is affecting all of our communities, all of our neighborhoods. that is affecting all of our communities, all of our neighborhoods. By the time Mr. Williams was killed, the swag gone. My neighborhood was carjacked and murdered as well. And my, my thoughts and prayers go out to the, the Williams families on behalf of our residents in the 11th Ward. Our condolences and our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too would like to be associated and extending my condolences to the Williams family on behalf of the residents of the 37th Ward. We appreciate the time that we were able to use Mr. Williams in the service and helping our city. So thank you very much, and we will continue to pray for the family as we continue to work on issues to resolve our ongoing issues in carjacking.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution for Mr. Williams. I want to thank Chairman Austin for creating this resolution as well. And on behalf of all the residents of the 45th Ward, we send our condolences to the Williams family. We are very thankful for his service and his dedication to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, I too rise in support of this honoring Lieutenant Williams' family. Thank you, Chairman Austin, for honoring the legacy of the great man. I have a personal connection with this family through his view. She wrote Sister in Service, Williams Barton, and her husband Quentin Barton, whom I grew up with, to Mrs. Williams and, and the daughters and sisters. While we don't understand God's timing, we truly fear family, but to serve our great city of Chicago. May God continue to bless and keep you all, and I look forward to celebrating Lieutenant Williams' life in the 34th Ward when that room is dedicated to a great man who served the city very well.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ciccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Chairman Austin for putting forward this resolution. I also like to rise in support of the resolution and on behalf of the 25th Ward constituents, would like to offer our condolences and also our commitment to continue to fight to make sure that this is, this, these tragedies don't affect our communities. This has been a tragic year, over 750 murders, and our commitment to continue to fight to address these issues, our condolences and prayers to the family. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. Lieutenant Duane Williams sadly lost his life in my community, supporting a local business, picking up popcorn for his family. I did not know Lieutenant Williams, but in speaking to so many of his colleagues from the Chicago Fire Department and at OEMC, I heard over and over the kind of man he was. A proud leader, a strong voice. One colleague referred to him as the salt of the earth. He was a father, a grandfather, a great-grandfather. He was a musician. He was a dedicated member of the Chicago Fire Department. He was a hero. On behalf of my community, I offer my sincere condolences to the Williams family. Godspeed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. I too want to join the body and associate myself with this resolution. Karen and your daughters, I still think and reflect upon the homegoing service for your husband and your father and the many emotions that were shared by family members. For those of you who were not able to attend or otherwise see the funeral service, it was a beautiful homegoing. And Karen, the strength that you showed that day and utilizing, eulogizing your husband, I just am in awe of your strength. I know that this is incredibly difficult for your family. I know in our subsequent conversations, we committed to you that we would find justice for Duane, and now you know that four people have been charged through very hard work of the Chicago Police Department in cooperation with other law enforcement agencies. But I also recognize it's cold comfort for that loss that you feel. I want to share with the members of the body, one of the moments in the service that still has come back to me over and over again, and those were the comments of your nephew, who said at the time that if the young man who ultimately shot and killed your husband and father had just given him five more minutes, that he would have shared with them things that he has done with so many young men across the city. He would have talked them out of the actions that they were taking that day. He would have gone even further and offered to mentor them and bring them back into a different trajectory for their lives. But sadly, that he didn't get those five minutes, and now a 15-year-old, two 18-year-olds, and a 19-year-old are sitting in jail. Friends, there's a lot that we need to do more in this city to reach out to our young people. But for those who do cross the line, there has to be accountability for families like the Williams family. And so I just want to say to you, we will always be here with you. We will be with you every step of the way on this incredible painful journey of grief. We know these days are not easy. We know your hearts are heavy. But understand and recognize that we stand with you, united, to do everything that we can to support you and everything that we can to make sure that no other family has to go through the grief that you are experiencing. And if I may get a motion, I would like to offer the opportunity for one of the family members of Lieutenant Williams' family to speak.
So move, Madam.
So move, Madam.
Move.
I will defer to Mrs. Karen Williams, or if you prefer, one of your daughters to speak, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. We appreciate you guys. We, the Williams family, would like to thank Mayor Lightfoot, her office, City Council members, especially Alderman Carey, Austin, Alderman Curtis, who sat with us, who held our hands. We want to thank the Chicago Police Department, the South Suburban Police Departments, for their diligence and hard work. We want to thank the FBI and all those other entities who helped apprehend those and bring justice. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional.
Take your time.
I am his eldest child, and at 48, I'm still a daddy's girl. When I say that they took our world, they truly have. We appreciate everything the city of Chicago is doing and has done. Three of us are here in Atlanta, and my sister, Dekeeta, is still in Chicago with my mom and who is assisting. My father would want us to go on and fight a good fight. We pray for the families that have suffered violence in the city of Chicago, and we hold their hands as we walk through. Anything that we can do to assist anyone there, we are willing and able. We have started a foundation, the Lieutenant Duane P. Williams Foundation in our father's honor, to help youth and give them hope. And for the four that took our father, we still pray for them and their families as well. We want to thank you again, Mayor Lightfoot, for everything that you have done for our family and continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask the members of the body to join me in a moment of silence in honor of Lieutenant Williams and all the victims of gun violence across our city. Thank you all. And thank you again, and our sincere condolences to the Williams family. It's a hard journey, but as I said, we will be here every step of the way with you. Your father, I know, was incredibly proud of you girls. You have walked in his image and his love, and you are his legacy. So carry on, lean into your wonderful memories of your time with him. And as I said, we will be here for you. And thank you so much for your beautiful words. Thank you. Our second resolution today is a memorial resolution in honor of Judge Albert Porter Jr. And again, we will go straight to remarks. The sponsors are Alderman Brookins and Sawyer. And I will call upon Alderman Sawyer to begin.
Thank you, Madam President. I am proud to be associated with this resolution. Judge Porter was an icon in our community. For those of us that were lawyers, he was a voice of inspiration and guidance. I personally had benefited from knowledge from him and was just a wonderful person to speak to on a regular basis. I want to thank the family for allowing us to seek advice from him. I know you're mourning right now, but we all love you and support you in your endeavors. So I want to thank the Porter family for allowing us to just benefit from a wonderful man, wonderful judge, and a wonderful human being. God bless you and your continued endeavors, and to please reach out for anything that needs to be done. We are here for you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. Forgive me, but Judge Porter's death brings back a memory of my own husband, because I sat by the wayside on many days, listening at the sage advice that he would give to them. So between Judge Porter and Wilson Frost, I understood where they mentored me. So it hurts my heart again, because I can see that also in Lieutenant Williams or how he mentored so many men and would have mentored the young men that took his life. But I'm grateful to his family that I had an opportunity to receive some of that same advice from him. As much as he gave over to men and the men that's in this council, such as Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Brookins, and probably many more that have come through this council. But he's more than just an icon. He's a gift sent from heaven. So I can say on this day, two men have been sent from heaven by God to let us know that he is the way, the truth, and the light. To know that earth has no sorrow that heaven cannot heal. But Lord, sometime it just takes so long to heal. But on behalf of the 34th Ward, we love and appreciate the Porter family for allowing him to be a part of our lives. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too wish to be associated with this resolution. My condolences to the Porter family. They were like family to me, or he was like family to me. I've shared a lifetime of experience to the kids. Hang in there. You will get through this, but you have so many wonderful memories with your father and all of the things that you were exposed to. So I just want to again extend my condolences on behalf of myself, my family, and residents of the 5th Ward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The Chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. To the Porter family, Judge Porter was a judge's judge. He appeared to be right out of Central Casting. He was an inspiration to the young lawyers. He always comported himself in a stately manner, both on and off the bench. He would be sorely missed by me and my family. And on behalf of, of myself and our family, I've offered my deepest condolences to the Porter family, Darryl, Richie, and Alveda. God bless you, and God bless this man we had the honor and privilege to know over many years. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Brookins. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am proud to be associated with this resolution. Although Judge Porter was very active in, in 21st Ward Democratic Organization more than half-century, his family resided in the 19th Ward on Longwood Drive. I, I played Little League with his son Richie, and over the last 20 years or so, he was often counsel for us here for issues where the Dan Ryan Forest Reserve right down the block from the family home. He was a mentor to many. I'd like to express my condolences on behalf of his neighbors here in the 19th Ward, to his family. Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. I too, as a chief sponsor for this resolution, as well as the chief sponsor for the Williams resolution, just want to offer my condolences to the Porter family. The words have been said, but it bears repeating. He was a giant in our community. And as a lawyer, I was proud to see him on the bench and all the great works that he did over the course of a long and storied career. and all the great works that he did over the course of a long and storied career. So we offer you our sincere condolences on the passing of your father and your grandfather and wish him resting in peace and power. You know, as Chairman Austin says, we never know when God will call us home. We just hope that we serve every day in a way that honors the gifts that we've all been given. And your father absolutely did that every single day of his life. So our condolences to you. I'd ask the colleagues of the City Council for the same privilege to allow a member of the Porter family to address the body. Is there such a motion?
Remove him.
Remove.
Thank you. I invite a representative from the Porter family to address the body.
Hello. My name is Meldrick Porter, and Judge Porter's widow. And I'd like to thank you, Alderman, I'm sorry, Mayor Lightfoot, on behalf of the entire family for the honor that you have given my husband today. It is such a pleasure to know that he helped so many, and he was helped by so many. And thank you so much for the words that you have spoken today on our behalf with him. We certainly miss him, and we will always miss him. And I want to thank you again, Mayor Lightfoot, and the distinguished guests of the City Council on behalf of our family and many of them, I think, are watching from California and other places. But we want to thank you and keep us in your prayers. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much for those gracious words. And again, we wish you Godspeed on your journey in this transition without your husband, your father, and your grandfather. Thanks so much to the Williams family and the Porter family. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion for passage of the resolutions?
So move, Alderman Austin.
Alderman Mitchell?
Can I get a motion for passes of the resolutions?
So move.
Madam President, I'm going to pass the two resolutions by the same roll call vote as was used to determine court.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Madam Mayor, this is Alderman Maldonado. Can, I just want to be recognized on the roll.
Alderman Maldonado, can you just, one moment, please? There's a pending, I think, request motion, and then I will be happy to recognize you. Alderman Mitchell? Go ahead.
Now move to return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Maldonado, I, the chair recognizes.
Thank you. I want to be recognized on the roll call, and that's why I wanted to make the comment earlier.
Your presence will be reflected. The chair recognizes Alderman Stillerstein. Did you have something that you wanted to address?
Thank you, Madam President. As today is Holocaust Remembrance Day, I'm wondering if we can suspend the rules just to also have another moment of silence to remember the 6 million Jews and the many millions of other people and their lives that were lost in that tragedy that was taken during that horrific time.
Yes, ma'am. I would call upon the members of the body to join us in a moment of silence. Today, Holocaust Remembrance Day, obviously, we can never forget what tragedy came to the Jewish community and others as a result of the events over many years that we now recognize as the Holocaust. Please do join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And Madam President, if we could also, just, I'd like to honor those survivors who have somehow managed to put their lives back together after losing everything and everyone. And as you said, we must never forget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. Next, we'll move on to communications. Madam Clerk.
A series of communications firm are honored the mayor to the honorable, the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the controller, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending section 2, 32 dash 031 of municipal code regarding security instruments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Park District for expenditure of TIF funds. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chief Financial Officer, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the Department of Water Management to enter to a revised water supply preliminary agreement with the city of Dolea. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit herewith a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class 6B tax status for property located at 45, 45 West Armitage Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class 6B tax status of property located at 3408 East 118th Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class 6B tax status for property located at 1321 West 119th Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing a Class 7B tax status for property located at 1534 Southwestern Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Public Health, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending 2-112 of the municipal code and associated sections. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a 30-year renewable term for ARO ownership properties. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to acquire property. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of city-owned property located at 3410 West Ogden Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the disposition of a city-owned property located at 1114 South Mason Avenue to neighbor space. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a renewal lease agreement for the North Plasky branch and the Chicago Public Library. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Corporation Council and the Budget Director, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the Illinois Council of Police. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Nancy Andrade as a member and chair of the Chicago Commission on Human Relations for a term effective immediately and expiring July 1, 2023, to succeed Mona Noriega, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Mariana Osora as a member of the Advisory Council on New Americans for a term effective immediately and expiring February 19, 2022. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the Advisory Council on Veterans. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the Commission on Chicago Landmarks. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Notification as to designation of Celia Meza as an additional proxy to fix signature of mayor to certain documents. Notification of sale of City Chicago multifamily housing revenue bonds, HPR Preservation Department's Project Series 2020. Closing certificate for City Chicago General Obligation Line of Credit Program. Finally, the ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority to reallocate a portion of the city of Chicago's unused tax-exempt volume cap for 2020. Inspector General's Audit Report concerning the city's capital improvement program, development, and valuation. Inspector General's Audit and Program Review Section 2021 Annual Plan. Inspector General's Evaluation of the Use of Affidavit Overrides and Disciplinary Investigation of Chicago Police Department Members. Inspector General's Follow-Up Audit Report Regarding the Department of Public Health Air Pollution Enforcement Program. Inspector General's Fourth Annual Progress Report Regarding the Procurement Reform Task Force. Inspector General's Quarterly Report for the period ended December 31, 2020. Inspector General's Urgent Recommendations Regarding the Chicago Police Department's Search Warrant Policy. Department of Health's Fourth amended and reissued Order Number 2020-2 concerning the duties of hospitals, other hungry facilities, and business establishments. And Department of Health's Fourth amended and reissued Order Number 2020-4 concerning medical data sharing requirements. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on December 16, 2020, which required my statutes be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on January 27, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the ordinances authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approval of 2021 budgets, and execution service provider agreements for special service area numbers 1-2015, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 13, 20, 21, 2016, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 2014, 29, 2014, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 25, 2015, 38, 39, 42, 43, 44, 45, 47, 48, 50, 51, 52, 55, 56, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 69, 71, 72, and 73, which were passed by the City Council on December 16, 2020, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were also published in special pamphlet form on December 16, 2020. I also inform the City Council that the ordinances authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approval of 2021 budgets, execution of service provider agreements, and amendment of year 2019 levy and agreement ordinance and year 2020 service provider agreement for special service area numbers 16, 17, and 18, which were passed by the City Council on December 16, 2020, and were requested to be published in a special pamphlet form or published in a special pamphlet form on December 16, 2020. I also inform the City Council that the ordinances authorizing the enlargement of boundaries, tax levies, approval of 2021 budgets, and execution of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 19 and 54, which were passed by the City Council on December 16, 2020, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in a special pamphlet form on December 16, 2020. I also inform the City Council that the ordinance establishing special service area number 75 authorizing the imposition of a tax levy, approval of 2021 budget, and execution of a service provider agreement, which were passed by the City Council on December 16, 2020, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, was published in a special pamphlet form on December 16, 2020. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit herewith the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims against the city of Chicago, which referred to the Committee on Finance. And correction of the September 19, 2020 City Council Journal Proceedings, which is referred to the Committee on Committee Endrolls. Your honor, that concludes mayoral and clerk communication.
Do you need a little timeout, Clerk?
That was a lot. You guys have been busy. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we will have the committee reports. We start with the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, the first-ever committee report. Chairman Raboyos.
Thank you, Madam President. And members of the City Council reporting for your committee on immigration and refugee rights, for which a virtual meeting was held on January 19, 2021. The committee recommends passage of the following. First, and going out of order, is item number two, the consideration of Resolution R 2020-1072, calling for the incoming Biden administration to immediately enact immigration reform. Madam President, I understand that Alderwoman Haddon and Alderman Rodriguez would like to speak to this item.
The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Presidents, and today, I believe, is going to be a good day for immigrants in our city and really across the country. I think we have a message to send from our city that we care deeply for our residents that include immigrants. I wanted to thank Alderwoman Maria Haddon for joining me and the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights in introducing this resolution that calls on the Biden administration to immediately roll back the 400-plus Trump-era anti-immigrant policies and executive orders. Those items include a moratorium on arrests, detentions, and deportations, repeal of the Muslim ban, and restoration of DACA and temporary protected status, and to enact immigration reform that will bring all 11 million undocumented immigrants into lawful status. We plan to send a suitable copy of this resolution to President Biden, the majority and minority leaders of the U.S. Senate, and the Speaker and minority leader of the U.S. House of Representatives. Today, Chicago sends a message, a national message, that we are against the scapegoating of immigrants. I represent the most immigrant ward in the city of Chicago, the most immigrant community in the Midwest United States. Our business district, 26th Street, is the second magnificent mile, and our immigrant residents and entrepreneurs are the backbone of not just 26th Street, not just the 22nd Ward, but of our city. We need to continue to support our immigrant brothers and sisters rather than hurt them in a myriad of ways that have been done over the past four years, and I'm proud to do that today. I want to congratulate President Biden and the Department of Justice, who just yesterday heated our call to action. They rescinded the zero-tolerance immigration rule that was enacted by former President Trump that led to the horrific separation of families at the border. We will continue to push for more to support our immigrants that come from all over the world. One in seven residents of the United States of America is an immigrant, and their children and grandchildren, great-grandchildren, make up most of the rest of our country. Nowadays, these immigrants are Latino, but they are also African, Caribbean, European, and Asian. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues who have joined, Alderwoman Haddon and myself, in co-sponsoring this resolution, and I yield the force to my colleague. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my colleague, Alderman Rodriguez. Thank you to Chairman Raboyos, and thank you to all of my colleagues who are supporting us in this resolution. I won't repeat what Alderman Rodriguez had to say, but I will stand here as a member of our progressive I won't repeat what Alderman Rodriguez had to say, but I will stand here as a member of our Progressive Caucus and as a member of our Black Caucus as well, and as the representative of the 49th Ward to remind us all how rich our city is, how rich our city is made, our culture and our communities by many people who have immigrant status here in the 49th Ward. While I won't be able to claim to beat Alderman Rodriguez in having the most immigrants, I know that our diversity is a point of pride. With no racial majority, with no ethnic majority in the 49th Ward, we've got over 80 languages spoken and have historically been home to immigrants and refugees from all over the world. I know that we, as a city, hold this as a core part of our values and standing up to protect one another, and I thank my colleagues, I thank Chairman Raboyos and members at ICIRR as well in making sure that we're sending a strong message to our federal government. And while I am really hopeful by the changes that we're seeing already in the early days of this administration, we know that we've got to stay vigilant, we must stay alert, and we must continue to push for more changes to make sure that all of our residents can be safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Haddon. Chairman Raboyos, back to you.
Madam President, it is my understanding that Alderman Rosa from the 35th Ward would like to speak to this item as well.
I just remind Alderman that if you want to speak to a matter, please use the raise your hand function so that you can be called upon. I don't see Alderman Rosa's hand raised. Alderman Rosa, would you like to speak to this matter? Okay. Chairman Raboyos, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez. Sorry, could you repeat that? Sorry, Alderman Lopez?
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tijo Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Tijo Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyos.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyos is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Waggaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Waggaspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spassato.
No.
Alderman Spassato is a no. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kapelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Anyone I miss? Peter?
There are 47 yays, one nay.
The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of reconsideration of the, vote in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. When nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Raboyos, back to you.
Madam President, item number 1, 02021-117, is an amendment of municipal code titles 2, 7, 9, 11, 16, and 17, modifying the Welcoming City Ordinance and modifying terminology in other chapters. Madam President, I will yield the floor to anyone who wishes to speak on this matter.
The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Presidents. Again, I rise in support of a pro-immigrant bill, something that we can do here locally to make our streets safer, to make our communities stronger. This bill is not just about supporting immigrants. It's about supporting the quality of life of all Chicagoans. When immigrants feel safer, our communities are safer. Let me thank you, Mayor, for bringing this bill forward and introducing it. I'd also like to thank the folks who've worked on this so hard, Alderwoman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez and Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa. With them and the Chicago Immigrant Working Group, Policy Working Group, who spent years working on this piece of legislation, organizing communities, bringing folks out of the shadows to fight for their rights, I've been extremely proud to be a part of this effort. Let me remind you, colleagues, of what we're voting on here today. The amendments to the Welcoming City Ordinance in Section 2, 173, 042 remove carve-outs that before recent non-legislative policy change would allow Chicago police to cooperate with federal immigration in certain instances. I repeat, would allow, would not allow police, Chicago police and law enforcement to cooperate with federal authorities, but would allow judges in certain instances to engage when they deem fit. Secondly, I'm very proud that this amendment in Section 2, 173, 070 supports the victims of violence, individuals reporting violence who typically qualify for U-vises. And lastly, this amendment in Article 2 revises terminology in the city code 12 times in our city code that states citizen. We replace citizen with individual, person, et cetera, which creates a more inclusive city code. Again, I want to congratulate the Chicago Immigration Policy Working Group for years of advocacy on this issue. It's been an honor to join you over the last couple of years to work on this matter. I want to thank the 30-some-odd, almost 40 of our colleagues, who in some version have signed on and supported this measure. Finally, to Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez and Carlos Ramirez Rosa, and to you, Mayor, I appreciate the collaboration we've had on this effort. And really finally, to our chairman, thank you so much. You've been very gracious in your leadership on these issues, and I yield the floor to my colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Ray Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, members of the City Council. I rise in opposition to this ordinance. I rise in opposition contrary to the comments that have been expressed, not because of racism or xenophobia, but because I too represent immigrant communities. I too represent individuals who want to live safely in their neighborhoods, who want to see a better future for themselves and their families in this country. There are parts of this ordinance I do support. I do believe increasing access to U-vises and changing the language within the municipal code is long overdue. But as someone who has not only represented the undocumented, who has worked with the undocumented to help them stay in this country, I know that they too are under threat of violence in our neighborhoods, not only from American citizens, but from a very small group throughout many of our neighborhoods who happen to be undocumented and have so taken hold of the gang lifestyle in our neighborhoods. They have been sucked into the generational violence that impacts so many of our communities. And what this ordinance does is treats those few individuals with the same compassion that you claim to want to give to the individuals who are here undocumented, trying to do right, trying to create a better Chicago, trying to do better for them and their families. And that is wrong. To lump both groups together is not what the undocumented community wants. And I could say this, not as a matter of rhetoric, but as a matter of fact, when I ask my own constituents, whether they are in Brighton Park, Bank of the Yards, or Gage Park, if I should step back from what I'm advocating when I say that those that are committed to violence in our neighborhoods should not be given refuge, those same undocumented individuals look at me and say, get them out too. If they do not want to be here, if they do not appreciate the opportunity, if they refuse to be beneficial members of our society, why are we protecting them? That is the message I have heard loud and clear from my undocumented residents. That is why I'm in opposition today. And I ask each and every one of you today to think about that when you're casting your vote on this matter. We, as Chicago, have led the nation in supporting undocumented individuals. We have been welcoming to all people who come here with or without papers as long as they are committed to making Chicago a better place. I, for one, believe in that philosophy. Many of you believe in that philosophy. And we can fix this in keeping with that philosophy as well, but we were not given the option to do that. This was not something built in collaboration because my objections and the concerns of my community are well-known. And no one, whether it was from this administration, this committee, or other, has ever reached out to see what we can do to bridge that gap. That is not cooperation. This is being rammed down our throats for a headline, using fear tactics and political buffoonery to get this passed. It is unacceptable and it is wrong, not only for what you're trying to do, but for how you're grouping people together when they don't belong grouped in such a manner. We should, we must protect those who have come here trying to build a better life. We should be welcoming and provide sanctuary to those who believe in our society, believe in our city and our country, just have not had the opportunity to become citizens because of the failure of the federal government. That much is I agree with. But if you are here and you look at your neighborhood with terror, then I cannot say that I would want to give you the same amount of compassion and the same cover to state. And I ask all of my colleagues to think about that and vote no in this ordinance. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. In response to the comments that my colleague Alderman Lopez just made, I just want to say that this is about due process. And undocumented people are not being afforded the right to due process. So this is what we're talking about. This is not about protecting people in a different way that we would do with other people. It's about due process. It's about the right to be able to have their day in court if they are accused of a crime. But I'm going to try to continue to make this beautiful because today is a day that I want to be able to celebrate. It has taken a lot of effort and a lot of fight from our communities to be able to get to this point. Today is a beautiful moment in the history of the city as we remove the exceptions that have been used to this day to justify collaboration between the Chicago Police Department and ICE and to the court members of our community without a right to due process. I arrived in Chicago 11 years ago, and during that time, most of what I have seen our undocumented community in this city do is fight for their lives, fight to be able to keep their families together, fight to protect each other from deportation, fight to support families where Brett Winter has been deported, fight, fight, fight. For the last five years, the Immigration Policy Working Group has been fighting at the policy level to ensure that we remove the carve-outs that keep undocumented people in constant fear. Today, Chicago becomes a true sanctuary for undocumented siblings. And this become particularly important at a moment when we are witnessing a rise in white supremacist hate and anti-immigrant rhetoric. I want to thank the courageous undocumented people who have put everything on the line to get to this point, the immigrant rights and community organizations who have worked nonstop, my colleagues Alderman Rodriguez and Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa. And thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, and your team for the great work in getting this transformational measure finally passed in Chicago. Also, thank you Chairman Raboyas for your collaboration to be able to get to this point. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank you so much to the new chairman of the Immigrant and Refugee Rights Committee, Ariel Raboyas, for reporting out this very important measure today. You know, our immigrant communities have gone through so much over the past four years. A president who was elected on some of the most vile anti-immigrant rhetoric that we have heard in the generation, a president who made it his job and his task to wage a war of terror in our communities, threatening our communities with raids on homes, in neighborhoods, at bus stops, our community has been through so much. And this president also sought to use our courts and his executive authority to try and strip away our city's ability to say, no, we will not cooperate with immigration law enforcement, that we will not work with Immigration and Customs Enforcement to deport people in our community, to rip people from their homes and from their families. And so today is such a beautiful day because after four years of attacks on our immigrant communities, we are turning the page on President Trump and Trumpism. And we are doing it together as a Chicago City Council, as you, Mayor, as Aldermen, as community groups, all come together to say, this change is so important, and it's time that we get it done. It was in 2015, at the very end of that year, that we released a set of recommendations, six recommendations that the City of Chicago could take to become one of the most immigrant-friendly cities in the world. And despite our best efforts to compromise and to meet with Mayor Rahm Emanuel, we continue to face opposition from him. And so we were so pleased as a coalition fighting to make this change when in the 2019 mayor election, you committed to get this done if you were elected. And we thank you so much, Mayor Lightfoot, for keeping that promise and for working and continuing to work with our immigration groups to get this done now at this time. We greatly, so greatly appreciate it. This is such an important change because in the City of Chicago, we face too many barriers to people not being afraid to picking up the phone to call 911. And no one should be afraid to call 911. But we know that too many of our black residents, too many of our Latinx residents, too many of our immigrant residents are afraid to pick up that phone for many of the same and for different reasons. And so that is why, by being able to tell our residents that in no case, with no exception, will your call to 911 result in you or a family member being turned over by our local police to Immigration and Customs Enforcement.
police to Immigration and Customs Enforcement, we are creating a Chicago where one day, hopefully soon, no one will be afraid to call 911. And in that way, we are making our community safer. I want to remind my colleagues of a dear colleague email that I recently sent them this past Monday, where I shared two studies, one from the University of California, San Diego, and one from Stanford University, that found recently in 2017 and 2020, that not only did sanctuary city policies not have a negative impact on policing and crime, but in fact, they had a positive impact on making our community safer. And it's because of that simple reason that I keep going back to, no one should be afraid to call 911. So I want to thank the undocumented immigrant activists that first brought this issue to the forefront, that did not back down, that continued to organize, that engaged in direct action, that did press conferences and op-eds and rallies and marches. Because of your work, because of your leadership, we are turning the page on Trump and Trumpism here in the city of Chicago. We are showing that not only did President Trump's attempts to undo our sanctuary city policies fail, but we are coming out of his presidency by strengthening them. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, and thank you to the vast majority of our colleagues, over two-thirds, who have already committed to support this measure. It's so important for immigrant families, for public safety, to make sure that we as a city of Chicago are a place where no one is afraid to call 911. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ciccho Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me thank you and the administration, Chairman Reboiras, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Ramirez Rosas, and Rodriguez Sanchez for this important piece of legislation. As an immigrant myself, and as someone who has watched this process very closely as an organizer, as a community member, it's been years in the making. When we talk about collaboration, this has been truly a collaborative effort, one of the instances we have all come together to make sure that we protect refuge, sanctuary, and support to an immigrant community that has been harassed, disrespected, humiliated, and marginalized during the last four years, but for a long time. But during the last four years, we have seen white supremacists, we have seen a cruel system that dehumanized the immigrant community. And that's, I think, some of the comments that we continue to hear. Really sad to see another Latino alderman making those comments. But when we see on the last four years, the suffering, the dehumanization in our own communities, we have seen kids in cages, families deported, even mothers who have their uterus removed under the last administration. We owe to the immigrant community to make sure that we protect them, that we do everything we can to make sure that we truly a sanctuary city. I also like to elevate Alderman Ramirez Rosa's point around the 911 calls. Today, in communities like Chinatown, Pilsen, we continue to have that as a big issue. People are afraid of calling 911. People are afraid and distrust their own government. This piece of legislation will do justice to our communities who have been living in fear and the shadows for way too long. This body has a responsibility with every community, Native American community, a Black community, or Latino community, every single community, to make sure that we treat it with respect, with dignity, so that we can access city services, just like anybody else. I want to just thank again, everybody who worked in collaboration to make sure that our families during this, just one of the most tragic, one of the most hard times for our communities, very painful what we've seen over the last four years. And I see very few who are actually condemning in this same body, white supremacists, those who actually have been causing terror in our communities, even at the highest level of government. I think that we should focus on energies on that, not on the full families, on our immigrant community who is vulnerable. Thank you again for those of us who have come together in this collaborative effort. Thank you to the administration. And let's make sure that we do right, but our communities already suffer. I urge my colleagues to support this important piece of legislation. Thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman Ciccho Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I stand in support of this ordinance and the changes. I want to thank you, as well as our colleagues who are working on this and have been working on it for years, and the community organizations. It's absolutely crucial that this moves forward, and I am in deep gratitude. This for me is a very personal issue. I grew up in an immigrant family, and it's not lost on me how the narratives of feeling excluded, of being someone who had to be in line in grocery stores while people were telling my parents to learn the language or leave the country. Thinking about what that does to a person's psyche and what it's done to mine, many of the ways that I'm broken are because of my experience and the narratives that I was led to believe in feeling ostracized and being an undocumented family. So I could not allow certain comments that were uttered here to go without a response. I think to continue to expound that kind of narrative and point out, you know, those small numbers of people who are violent to reflect the whole community is just unconscionable, especially when every member of this body has come from an immigrant family. They weren't indigenous and came from this country. And when we think about the people who were terrorists and attacked our capital and undermined democracy, those were not migrants. Those were people who felt the ideas and believed the fear-mongering that were spoken just earlier by one of my colleagues. It's unconscionable. When we think about what this country has done and what ICE, which is an organization that should not be around, has done to people and separating families, is even more important that something like this moves forward. So I thank you and everyone who worked on this for the courage and the bravery to really show what it means to welcome someone regardless of who they are, because that is what this democracy and this country claims to be founded on. And I'm glad to see that we do something that lives in that spirit. To all those undocumented folks now who are out there feeling the same way, feeling excluded, feeling intimidated to even seek out vaccinations in a time of a global pandemic, it is comments like that that make them feel even more afraid to come out and be part of our society. So I am thankful for the work that's being done here, and I would urge all of my colleagues to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very proud to stand in support of this ordinance. I will not reiterate the clarity, the wisdom, the eloquence of my colleagues who have come before me. They've said as much as needs to be said about the necessity and the wonderful values behind this ordinance, but I will speak to the notion that violence is being committed against our undocumented neighbors. There's been two times in the last year I witnessed violence against undocumented residents of my ward, and both times it was at the hands of ICE. Once, when a husband was stolen away from his family in front of his wife, in front of his children, who had to be exposed to that trauma. Thankfully, he was restored back to them. Again, when a grandmother was out pushing a stroller and was harassed by ICE in our community. That is an unconscionable and federally funded violence that I am glad we are cutting our ties with. I am so proud of the way my community then stood in solidarity with those families, and I am so proud to serve in this city that is showing its solidarity, not only in ways through policy and programs, such as with our Housing Assistance Program from the last year, when we only asked your need and not your citizenship status, but in ways that we are cementing and codifying that solidarity in this ordinance here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I join too on this legislation. Let me say just that I disagree with the rhetoric I'm hearing. It's more different than those political pundits on the right, under the guise of compassionate conservatism. This legislation you're putting forth is about human decency, about human values, inside xenophobia, inside immigrant sentiments that are taken root in this country. We've seen that over the last few years, this has gotten worse. And like many of my colleagues, I'm an immigrant. I came, my family looking for a better life, and worked hard and we achieved part of the American dream. Part of the American dream is also to fight for others, to look at rights that are not right for many that seem or are in the bottom of the electoral poll, if you will. Those that saw a better life, like my forefathers, that came here, but unfortunately because of politics, they've been chained in the shadows without having the ability to fend for themselves, to earn a living, to continue their education. It's a second-class citizenship, if you will, that I think you're putting your scope on, and you're saying that this will not be tolerated under your administration, and the fact that this city will always be an immigrant city. And yes, the legislation is so complex, but it speaks to the values that are in all of us, fairness, the fact that if someone committed a crime, someone should be tried. This doesn't stop that. What it certainly does, and it puts, like one of my colleagues mentioned, the due process is long overdue. So I ask my colleagues to really think about what this means nowadays. I've been in this council for many, many years, and I've always treated everyone with respect and admiration for the work they do. And I think we're going to treat ourselves better. We're going to treat ourselves with dignity and common sense, something that is long-lasting in this body, that when I came here, we just don't have anymore. And so I appreciate those of my colleagues that have been here, that we get along, we get things done for this city, for our constituents, because there's many among us, many of my colleagues have also those immigrant people that have not just happened to be Hispanic, but have many, many other races. So I applaud you for your efforts, and I applaud you for taking this time where other mayors could not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I was not going to speak today, but I, listening to the discussion and debate, I felt that I needed to. I know these are difficult times we're all facing, we're concerned about crime and murder rates and carjackings, 11,000 guns taken off the streets. And I don't think any of us are trying to be soft on crime. I know public safety is my number one concern. We need every police officer, every Chicago police officer, to be out there patrolling our streets. We need them, just this morning, today's the first day where teachers are reporting. I had one of our lunch aides was robbed at gunpoint this morning. That's how my day started. So we need to have our police officers out there patrolling the streets to protect against crime. I don't believe that this ordinance is being soft on crime. I know that's how some are portraying it. I disagree. A few years ago, we had a resolution supporting sanctuary city before the city council. And Chairman Burke provided us with a great history of the moral compass of this body. He provided us with the history of the fugitive slave law. And I have a copy of the Journal of Proceedings that he provided us all with. I have it framed in my office from October 28, 1850, when Congress passed the Fugitive Slave Law, which purported to be for the recovery of fugitive slaves, virtually suspends habeas corpus and the abolish the right of trial by jury and by the provisions, not only fugitive slaves, but white men owing service to another. The apprentice, the mechanic, the farmer, labor engaged on contract or otherwise, whose term of service are unexpired, may be captured and carried off summer alert without legal recourse of any kind. And this council passed an ordinance back in 1850 that directed our police officers and our citizens, that they be hereby, do not, they abstain from any and all interference in the cabin delivery of such fugitives, mind righteous oppression of whatever nation, name, or color. That's our history here in Chicago. There's been talk about a lot of cruel behavior to immigrants, and most recently. But don't forget, from once we came, mine were from Italy and from Ireland. Irish need not apply. The cruel behavior towards immigrants, that's an unfortunate part of our history, for human, humanness. I don't think that this ordinance is being soft on crime. I think it's being compassionate. It's following the moral compass of the city and the city council. This ordinance isn't going to direct the Chicago Police Department to not police and serve and protect. We do that. They do that on a daily basis. The women and men of the Chicago Police Department risk their lives for our residents. And as I said, we need to have all of our police officers out protecting our residents, not going and assisting ICE, not going on a raid, as my colleague just mentioned, of a grandmother or a husband, but protecting our residents. So as I look at this, I ask my colleagues to think about this. I know my colleague, my neighbor to the south, had some concerns with some of the language here. Well, we can't let perfection get in the way of progress. If we need to come back, we can amend something. But I think that we ought to pass this, and I fully support this, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I speak in opposition to this amendment of the Welcoming City Ordinance. The original Welcome City Ordinance was created in 1985 by Mayor Harold Washington as a way to prevent the city, departments, and officials from providing information on immigration status of Chicago residents. I understand the intention that was taken when this was created. The goal was to protect illegal immigrants who were productive members of society from being whisked away and separated from their families. The original Welcoming City Ordinance included exceptions where the police were able to work with US immigrations and help abide by the laws of the land. The amended Welcome City Ordinance that we are about to vote on removes those exceptions. The provisions that we put in place to protect the law-abiding citizens of Chicago are going to be removed. We are essentially welcoming criminals to our city. Doesn't have to do with illegals, illegal immigrants. It has to do with illegal immigrants that can be, that are convicted or have broken a law. If you are an illegal immigrant and a convicted felon or a fugitive, what better place to go than Chicago? Many people might ask, who else besides illegal immigrants will be granted this amazing privilege? The answer is no one. I'm a proud son of an immigrant, a very proud son of an immigrant. I believe that we have a duty to abide by our laws, including our federal laws. This ordinance irresponsibly offers protection for those who have possibly broken the law to hide underneath this ordinance and give them safe haven from federal prosecution. I'm sure there'll be criticism on this, but I want you to know this, I'll lose more sleep every night knowing how we failed our citizens of Chicago with our alarming crime rate and homicides, carjackings, shootings, more than anything. Today, we sat in council and already agreed almost unanimously to request our federal government to rework or change our laws pertaining to immigrants. That is a great start, the direction we should be going as far as following the laws. Change it there. Change it there before we change it here. Because of that, I encourage my colleagues to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to, um, recommend, uh, the leadership and the persistence, uh, by Alderwoman Rodriguez Rosa, that for several years now, they've been pushing for this amendment. I wanted, um, to recognize the leadership of Mayor Lyford, because after four years, to my knowledge, pushing for amendments to, um, this welcoming ordinance to remove the carve-outs, you were the only one who did not provide just lip service, you acted on your commitment to do good and remove those carve-outs, uh, from the existing ordinance. And I want to thank, um, Chairman Reboiras for taking on this ordinance so soon after becoming the chairman of this committee. Like one of my colleagues mentioned, um, the first mayor that provided some protection to the immigrant community in the city of Chicago was Mayor Harold Washington. He was the one, the first one who codified, um, the welcoming, uh, city ordinance for immigrants, undocumented immigrants in the city of Chicago. You know, at that time, um, um, it was really, it was embraced by the entire, entire body of this, uh, members of the city council. Um, and over the years, um, I saw carve-outs being built into the original spirit of the ordinance introduced and adopted by Mayor Harold Washington. And all this ordinance does is to remove those carve-outs, that in my judgment, it is an invitation for a few racist police officers we have in the city of Chicago as a, as an excuse to racial profile the undocumented community in our great city. So I, I hope that as a result of us adopting this ordinance here today, that those violators will really, will be held accountable for violating this ordinance. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I didn't plan on speaking today, but first I want to start by saying, and I don't know if it could be corrected or not, I don't believe so, but I wanted to say I wasn't paying attention like I should have in the beginning. In our first vote, I voted no, um, and I should have voted yes. So if there's any way, if we could check with law, if I could change that vote, I would greatly appreciate it, or at least if I could be on record as saying I mistakenly said no, when I should have said yes. But I am, I am just going to say one thing, I'm going to, I'm going to read something to everybody and I'll, I'll leave it up to you to figure out who said this. So, um, first of all, I'm not supporting this ordinance. I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody, uh, but here's what I have to say. American people are a welcoming and generous people, but those who enter our country illegally and those who employ them disrespect the rule of law. And because we live in an age where terrorists are challenging our borders, we simply cannot allow people to pour in the United States undetected, undocumented and unchecked. Americans are right to make, to demand better border security and better enforcement of immigration laws. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I don't usually get lost for words and I was going to go in a totally different direction, but, um, as a black woman who represents immigrants and refugees in our ward, um, I, I have heard the stories I have set with many families and have cried some tears and, and hugs and love to, to see their children and generations crying over the mistreatment. Um, I'm going to leave that there. So, um, I want to commend you Chairman and all of the Aldermen and Alderwomen, um, on this ordinance. And I want to say to my colleagues, um, that those that have supported this, that I do hope that there is the same level of support for the subcommittee on reparations, um, and that we really, you know, soften our hearts to some of us that clearly, uh, just don't get it. Um, yeah, I just want to say that. And thank you, Madam President, as we have our inaugural meeting on next month, uh, jump starting and, and setting the tone for Black History Month, that, that we really take a look at this and, and really figure this out. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. This is more, um, as I was always taught, especially in a public setting, when anything is said that's incorrectly, because we have children, um, listening, we have people who are learning, that's listening, and this is, um, although I support this ordinance, directed to my, um, colleague and friend, um, Alderman Andre Vasquez. I know your intentions are well-meaning, but everybody on this council are not immigrants. Um, immigrants by definition are a person who comes to a country to take up permanent residence. And then when you look at the word come, it says move or travel toward or into a place thought of as near or familiar. And so, um, African-Americans, um, who were brought to this country, not come to this country, are not immigrants. So I never want that, um, um, information to be passed on and said in public and then, um, let that be fact. So I just had to get on here and state that, just to correct, make that correction on record. And, um, as I support this ordinance and, and as Alderman Coleman said, as we move towards issues of reparations, we can continue to make this, um, city a, um, better city. And sometimes this city has to lead even before the country. And it was also stated that something about federal laws and for us to follow federal laws, well, slavery was a, um, federal law at one time. And so at the end of the day, um, every federal law is not to be followed. And so, um, I, I commend our mayor for taking this on. And as we begin to continue to improve the lives of our, uh, community, I appreciate and really, um, felt the heartfelt, um, tone from, um, Alderman, uh, from, um, Alderman, Patrick Daly Thompson, because this does not, again, if those people are caught, just like anyone else, they'll be dealt with, um, accordingly, um, even to the point, um, I believe as this ordinance would say, if they are immigrant, if they are illegal immigrants and they're committing those crimes, they'll be dealt with at that time and, 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 and removed from this city. And so, um, um, I think, um, this is something we should support and continue to move forward, um, in this country. And as everybody knows, Chicago has always been groundbreaking. And so that's what we do here. So I appreciate this opportunity, Madam President, to, um, make those comments.
Thank you, Alderman Moore, for, for making those comments. The chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you, Madam President. I hadn't intended to speak about this matter, but, uh, when Alderman Thompson, uh, spoke so eloquently about the history of, uh, Chicago and its protection of, of immigrants and slaves going back to the 1850s, I was reminded about the debate that went on when I was the sponsor of the Matriculaconsular Ordinance. Alden Billy Elcasio joined me and many of the opponents who raised objections to that ordinance, um, were talking about the same fears that are expressed here today. I'm the grandson of immigrants. All four of my grandparents immigrated to this great nation. And, uh, as Alderman Thompson pointed out in his remarks, at the time we were debating, uh, that issue, I did look back and discover, uh, more about my own roots. And my one grandmother, Catherine Gallagher, arrived in this nation as an indentured servant. She was one of 13 siblings and the only way that they could get the passage on the ship that brought them to America was to sign away their freedom for a number of years, uh, in return for passage on that, that steamer. It, uh, brought to light, I think, some of the trials and tribulations that so many of our forbears have, uh, suffered. I, uh, am happy to say that the, uh, Matriculaconsular Ordinance that I sponsored so many years ago has been a great success. And, uh, what it helped to do was, uh, provide, um, immigrants who did not have the, uh, ability to get a driver's license, which I'm proud to say they can do in Illinois, much because of what this city council did to support that, uh, proposal in Springfield. Uh, it permitted them to call the police and report a crime, uh, without fear of having the, um, government come down on them, um, as a result. So, uh, I understand a little bit about the difficulties in getting these kinds of ordinances adopted, because I experienced the same thing with the Matriculaconsular, uh, many years ago. Let me say that as a result of my experience, uh, on that matter, I can assure the members of the city council who fear that this will encourage illegal activity, it did not happen with the Matriculaconsular. Uh, the fears that were expressed at that time are much the same as the fears that are being expressed now. So, um, again, let me say that, uh, I'm going to vote yes on this. Um, I, uh, urge everyone who has concerns about this matter to, um, allay those fears, just like the Matriculaconsular ordinance that we adopted many years ago. It will not be, um, an occasion for encouragement of illegal activity. Our, our police, uh, the police officers that are out there risking their lives day in and day out to try and enforce the laws and protect their fellow citizens are not going to be dissuaded. They're going to continue to do the fine job that they always do. Thank you, Madam President, and I again, uh, congratulate all those who have worked so hard on, uh, getting this ordinance to where it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in strong support of this ordinance and congratulate your administration and all the advocates, um, for immigrants and refugees and the members of the council for getting this, uh, ordinance to this point. And hearing a lot of the comments, um, I think it's important that we talk about, you know, who are we talking about when we're talking about immigrants in Chicago? We're talking about our neighbors. We're talking about people who, um, work in healthcare, work in the food industry, who for the pandemic have been working hard, taking care of us and serving us. They are part of who we are as citizens of Chicago. The last four years, um, ICE under President Trump has been a reign of terror on immigrants and refugees. And they have been living in fear. Um, one of the most difficult times for me in the last four years is, um, being a gouty school in my neighborhood and talking to third graders about immigrant questions, because their families were fearful and they were trying to understand what would happen if there was a knock on the door. And I ask all of you to think about that through your own lens or your neighbors. This is not going to make, um, people come to our city to commit crime. Um, this basically gives decent and dignity to those who are living here. If there are individuals who live here or come to our city and they commit a crime, Chicago police is going to prosecute that crime. But, um, this is going to help those in Chicago live, um, a little bit easier with dignity. And I think that it's important that we come together as a diverse city. So, um, I appreciate everyone who has gotten this, to this point. Uh, I ask for their vote on this and, um, as we come together as a city council. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Alderman Osterman. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, thank you for your leadership here. Also, uh, thank you to my colleagues, uh, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Rodriguez, uh, Chairman Reboires. Um, as Chair of the Progressive Caucus, I wholeheartedly stand in solidarity with the immigrant community. And let's be clear, the immigrant community is black, brown and white. I also stand in solidarity of doing always what's right, and this is definitely right. While slaves are not immigrants, as my colleague, uh, so pointedly stated, there are black immigrants of African descent that are also subject to these indignities. This is an immigrant, this is a country built on immigrants and slaves, built by immigrants and slaves. We cannot use these groups when convenient and then deny their liberties that we aspire to in this country. We have seen that those ideals can be hijacked and will be hijacked when convenient. We should always stand for what's right, because history and this past president have shown us that racism overt and covert is live. We always have to strive to do what's right. So I will stand in support of this and thank you again, Madam President, for your leadership.
Thank you, Alderman King. Alderman Vasquez, I see your hand raised, which you've already spoken to, uh, this, uh, measure and there are others who, um, are in the queue. Is there something additional?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I'll keep it brief. Yeah, very, I just wanted to, um, thank my colleagues, uh, Chairwoman Coleman, Alderman Moore, uh, for correcting me and rightfully stating that the American descendants of slavery, uh, were not immigrants. And I wanted to make sure that that was part of the public record and thank them for the correction.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just want to talk a moment about this as well. Um, I first came to this issue, uh, many years ago, working with organizations like Asian Americans Advancing Justice and Lase, Iser. I want to thank my colleagues for continuing the work that, um, many of those organizations started. I recall back in 2014, we settled a case with an Asian American woman named Jessica, Jessica Klycheck, who had been abused by police officers in a, in a very significant way. If you recall that settlement, the, for the members who were here, uh, the treatment that she received, um, put a scare, I think, into many of us and many in the community, especially my wife, who is an Asian American immigrant. And had my wife been treated in that same fashion, I don't know what I would have thought at that time or what I would have done. But what it led me to do was work more closely with those organizations to really start the process of improving our local community laws to increase the community safety for all residents, so that they, um, would be treated equally and so that we would refuse to alienate people in the way that we have for many decades. You know, and taking the broader historical view, we all know that immigrants are essential fabric of our nation and our national identity. Um, we've not only survived an influx of new immigrants throughout time, but every one of our communities has thrived as, uh, a result of that. The process might be messy. It certainly is at the national level, but I think what we've seen here is many organizations, many elected officials. many elected officials, and many residents in our city working together to produce something here that I think will help every resident in the city tremendously. And I think what it boils down to is that every one of us want to see each and every one of our friends, our family, and those who are affected by this be able to share in the American dream. So I fully support this, and I want to thank again my colleagues for the efforts that they've undertaken. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Wegasback, and the Chair recognizes Alderman Michelle Smith.
Thank you very much. I rise in support of this law. I guess I just want to share a personal reflection, which is that most of my family immigrated to the United States in 1908, or a little before and a little after. Before, there were significant restrictions on immigration in the country for people, at least from Europe, although of course from other parts of the world, there was a lot of discrimination. But I will say this, my grandfather and other members of our family were fleeing Russia because in those days, it was a favorite tactic to round up Jews and send them to the Army for 25 years, you know, without their consent, certainly, and it was called the draft. And so I guess you could say that a member of my family came to the United States as an alleged draft dodger. But he wasn't stopped, and he came and he made his way west, and he, and then later his son, my father, ended up raising eggs for the US Army during World War II and many, many other items. And I know that immigration is something that has been divided in our country for a long time, and in every time that there is an effort to make it a moral issue, and I mean a moral issue, like it's immoral to immigrate to this country if you don't follow the exact rules, I think it fails of its own weight because the laws themselves were largely created to bar people that other people were prejudiced against, afraid of, and at the very least ignorant. I'm a strong supporter of the police and want them to be able to arrest and prosecute criminals when they are there, and my understanding of this law is that all of those tools remain However, no one should have to fear calling 911 because they think the police are going to take them away for reporting the crime or having to report the crime. And I think that everyone, and I mean everyone, should look into their own family history in the way that frankly Alderman Burke just talked about, and try to find out what happened to their family, and find out whether, hmm, in the course of being an immigrant to this country and struggling, someone in your own family might have done something that you might not do today. Now, let me make clear, this is not to excuse, you know, crime, but I just say that in great, the thought that immigrants are somehow responsible for the crime in this country is ridiculous. So I really, while we should use every technique at our hand legally, under the Constitution, to fight crime, when it occurs, it certainly isn't restricted to immigrants. I spent most of my time in the US Attorney's Office convicting white collar defendants who had absolutely no excuse other than greed to destroy families, rip people off, and treated fellow citizens terribly. So I think that the concerns about the effect on law enforcement in this case are really overstated. And on the other hand, the value to using our cities' resources for the things that we really need to focus on, like crime and poverty and this pandemic, are much better served by, to the extent that we can, leaving people alone to do their work and raise their families. So that's why I support this ordinance, and I intend to vote in favor. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, last month, I met with the members of the United African Organization, a group that I meet with from time to time as they are located in my ward, and had an opportunity to talk to some of their members regarding their experiences in Chicago related to immigration and deportation and the gang database and other concerns that they raised regarding this welcoming ordinance. I think it's important that we look at the fact that this ordinance affects all kinds of people, people of color, people from the diaspora, and people from Africa and others that live in the city of Chicago who have to make Chicago their home. So I wanted to stand and lift up this ordinance and support and to congratulate the sponsors and the Chair of the New Immigration and Refugee Rights Committee for their work in making this law today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Yes, I'm having some audio difficulty.
Gardner, Alderman Gardner, I don't believe we're able to hear you.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me now?
Alderman Gardner, unfortunately, I don't believe that we can hear you. Is there a way that you can speak louder?
Audio problems.
All right, I think Alderman Gardner, Alderman Gardner, you can work with the clerk to submit your remarks, but I don't believe we're able to hear you.
Okay.
Apologies, Alderman Gardner, we're going to move on to the rest. I would just ask the clerk's office and the tech people to work with Alderman Gardner to see if we can get his audio feedback on. Chairman Reboyos, I believe the floor is yours after your many colleagues have spoken to this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Madam President. I move passage by the first favorable roll call vote of this Committee on Immigration and Refugee Rights and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception that the following Alderman wished to be recorded as a no.
Roll call vote, please.
Madam Clerk, we've had a request by Alderman Lopez for a roll call.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Vice President Harris, an aye or an aye?
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zloski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zloski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Thompson, was that you?
Did you get my vote?
Madam Clerk, I believe that Alderman Thompson was trying to vote aye.
Okay, Alderman Thompson, I have your marks and aye.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez.
Aye, no.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookings.
Aye.
Alderman Brookings is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Ticho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Ticho Lopez is an aye. Alderman Malanato.
Aye.
Alderman Malanato is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Reboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Reboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Absolutely, yes.
Alderman Ramirez-Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spazado.
Expazado is a no.
Alderman Spazado is a no. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
An emphatic aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tony.
Yes.
Alderman Tony is a yes. Alderman Gardner. I believe he's having technical issues. Alderman Gardner will follow up. Alderman Kapelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kapelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Hadden.
Aye.
Alderman Hadden is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye.
Alderman Hopkins votes aye.
I'm sorry?
Alderman Hopkins votes aye.
Alderman Hopkins votes aye.
Alderman Irvin votes aye.
Alderman Irvin votes aye.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, perhaps we can invite Alderman Gardner, who does appear to be on the feed, to raise his hand if he can hear us. First up, Alderman Gardner, if you can hear us, raise your hand.
Madam President, could I say something about Alderman Gardner right now?
I think he's raising his hand on Alderman Spazado. And then next, Alderman Gardner, if you vote aye, raise your hand again. If you do not raise your hand, we will record your vote as a no. And I'm seeing no hand raised, so Madam Clerk, we'll let the record reflect that Alderman Gardner votes no.
All right, any other Aldermen? Okay, Peter?
Your Honor, there are 41 yays, eight nays.
Thank you, Chairman Reboyos, the matter passes. Alderman Thompson for the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion that we reconsider this last vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering the last vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to motion for reconsideration signify by saying?
Nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion passes. I'm sorry, the motion for consideration fails. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to temporarily suspend the rolls for a minute. I have, I've been in contact with Alderman Gardner, and I want to let the committee know that Alderman Gardner and Samantha Fields had a child, and he's trying to communicate by way of phone, he's having his problems, but he wanted me to let everybody know that all is well, the wife is well, he's well, and the baby's well, but he's trying his best to communicate.
Girl, a boy!
Girl.
Ah, hey!
God bless her. God bless her. Congratulations.
Okay, I appreciate you letting me suspend the rolls. That's all I have to say about Alderman Gardner and Samantha Fields.
All right, congratulations to the happy couple. Alderman Reboyos, anything more from the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights?
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Finance, Chairman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on January 25, 2021. I'll be going out of order for the purposes of establishing a full roll call vote, and we'll start with item number three. So item number three is an ordinance evidencing intent on the part of the City of Chicago and Department of Aviation to issue Chicago O'Hare International Special Facility Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $55.6 million for the benefit of Transportation Infrastructure Properties LLC and/or Arrow O'Hare II LLC or affiliates thereof. This item was approved by the committee by a voice vote, so if no one wishes to speak on the matter, actually, it looks like Alderman Moore might, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by roll call vote.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to speak on this because it's eluded some people, but not a lot. This is a very historical moment for us here in terms of this contract. I, when we passed this, it made me think about when I first went to college at West Illinois University in McComb. Growing up in the projects in Inglewood, I always thought all white people had money and was wealthy. And when I got to McComb, Illinois, I stumbled on a child who was poor, living out of a trailer home, and I helped that family as a young person in college. And people asked me, why were you so concerned about this family? And I said, because there was a need, and it was intentional. And what we did here today, and what we're doing here today, and what we did in committee, was, under Arrow term and the leadership of people like Greg Russell, for the first time in the history of this nation, a major airport cargo facility is being built and led by an African-American company. Never before has that happened. And so often, we hear that people do not have capacity. I want to thank Greg Russell and their team for listening, for being intentional after listening, and making sure that this opportunity was given. In Phase 1 and 2, out of $133 million, only 2% of those dollars, 2.6, went to African-American companies. And this Phase 3, this African-American-led company is managing all 56 million with at least 23 million of that being controlled by an African-American company. That is major. That is huge. And if you all hear me always say, when black people win, everybody wins. Because though he controls that, he's going to hire someone Latino, he's going to hire someone white, hire someone Asian, but all the time, it doesn't happen the other way around. So I'm excited for more construction. I'm excited for Discoto Company and everybody who worked together, also under the leadership of our Commissioner Jamie Reed, to make sure not just equality, but equity was had in this matter. And I want to thank Greg Russell and his entire team for listening, and as I told them in committee, they could have walked away. They could have walked away, and they did not. They stayed to do the right thing. So I thank you all, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this matter, Madam President. They stayed to do the right thing. So I thank you all, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this matter, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Alderman Moore for reading my speech, lest the portion about Macomb. But nonetheless, I do want to thank Chairman Wagaspak in working with us on this item and the finance team, as well as the other items, other individuals that were mentioned by Alderman Moore. Again, I think this is something from a historic perspective in the City of Chicago, not only here, but nationally, as Alderman Moore stated so eloquently earlier. So again, I don't know how you got in my email to do that, but I appreciate your help, David. Thank you.
I went to Western, in Macomb.
Thank you. Chairman Wagaspak.
Madam President, if I could, I just want to thank my colleagues, too. They did work very hard on this and were very diligent in making sure they followed through on all of the questions that they originally brought up at the end of last year, early in the fall, and then continued through the briefings this past week. And I want to thank them for all the hard work that they did to make these changes. So with that, I'd like to renew my motion.
I believe there's a motion for passage by voice vote? Or actually, I think you amended it to ask for a roll call vote. Is that correct, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, please call the, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Peter, hold on one second. I apologize. There was a late hand that was raised. Alderman Burke? The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Madam President, thank you. Chairman Wagaspak, remember, I abstained this year, please.
Madam President, during the committee, there was an abstention by Alderman Burke on this item.
Understood.
Thank you.
Now, can we resume the roll call vote, please?
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada votes aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell votes aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King votes aye. Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston votes aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer votes aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell votes aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris votes aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal votes aye. Alderman Sedlowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Sedlowski Garza votes aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson votes aye. Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas votes aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn votes aye. Alderman Burke recuses himself on the Rule 14. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez votes aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman votes aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore votes aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis votes aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea votes aye. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor votes aye. Alderman Brookings.
Aye.
Alderman Brookings votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez votes aye. Alderman Tavares.
Aye.
Is that an aye, Alderman?
Yes.
Alderman Tavares votes aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott votes aye. Alderman Ticho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Ticho Lopez votes aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado votes aye. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett votes aye. Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin votes aye. Alderman Telaferro. Alderman Telaferro.
Aye.
Alderman Telaferro votes aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas votes aye. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspak.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspak votes aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin votes aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas votes aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz votes aye. Alderman Spazado.
Exposado's an aye.
Alderman Spazado votes aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent votes aye. Alderman Vasquez. Is that your aye, Alderman?
Yes, that's an aye.
Alderman Vasquez votes aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano votes aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley votes aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith votes aye. Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Tony votes aye. Alderman Gardner.
Gargners an aye. That's from Nick Spazado, communicated to me.
Oh.
The Alderman Gardner's hand raised, and we will, for purposes of this City Council meeting, the times that Alderman Gardner raises his hand in the chat as he is doing, consider him voting aye, assuming there's no objection from the body. So ordered.
Alderman Gardner votes aye. Alderman Kapelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kapelman votes aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin votes aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman votes aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon votes aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein votes aye. Alderman Cardona. Your Honor, there are forty-eight yays, no nays.
Chairman Wagaspak, the matter passes. Alderman Thompson for the motion for reconsideration.
I motion that we, through this last vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering the previous vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wagaspak.
Thank you, Madam President. So item number one is next. This is a communication authorizing the appointment of the independent firm of Deloitte LP and a consortium of minority and women-owned accounting firms to perform the audit for the City of Chicago fiscal year ending December 31, 2020. If any colleagues wish to speak on this, I'll close on the item.
I see no hands raised, Chairman.
Okay. Madam President, I'd like to take a moment to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful conversation around this increased diversity and inclusion that is sought through this recently issued RFP. I'd also like to thank Comptroller Soni and her team for the tremendous work in preparing and issuing the RFP. I think that over twenty years of deference to one firm is too long, and we look forward to this real historic opportunity here to bring in more inclusive and diverse audit teams to serve the taxpayers and the City of Chicago.
Chairman Wagaspak, one of your colleagues that I believe actually wants to speak to this. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Madam President, thank you. And Chairman, I am so sorry I have walked away for a second. Didn't want to, didn't want to get in front of you. But after talking with our esteemed comptroller, who did a great job in this, but also under the leadership of this mayor, this is huge, you all. As Chairman Wagaspak has mentioned, for years, and we've talked about one person constantly getting this contract, and many times, this is not being open to people of color, African-Americans, other Latinos, to do these audits. And so when, 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 when we can open this up for others who have not been included before to get these opportunities, this, this is, this is historical, and today has been a historical day. And it's, and all this historical stuff is happening under the leadership of our great mayor. And, and, and I appreciate her for doing that. She constantly says, looking at things in, with the lens, with the equity lens. And she's doing that, and consistently. Nobody in this world is perfect, but she's perfect about fighting for this issue. And I stand with her, I stand with her team on this, and hoping that we can get people to have an opportunity to participate in this audit that otherwise would not have had an opportunity. So thank you for so much, and I'm so proud of the leadership of our comptroller, Reima, as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues in this committee board. The honorable David Moore, I could not concur more in the positive light you are doing this. Look, it's been twenty years, and the rates of minorities, African-Americans, and Hispanics still stands 6.8%. After twenty years, they cannot find more than those percentages to work for them. And what it does is, this is huge in a lot of different ways, not just the audit teams. They're going to be working on seventeen separate agencies, enterprise funds that we have. But this, what this is going to do, though, is those firms, those middle firms, that recruit from colleges here in this city, from middle colleges, not tier-one schools, Mayor. Because the Deloitte Tushes and the all, former Andersons and those folks, they recruited from tier-one schools only. And a lot of our young, talented people go to, go to Chicago State, they go to Northeastern, they go to Western Illinois University, like David did, and they never get a shot at working for these firms, and this changes those dynamics. They must recruit from the ranks of our schools if they are auditing our books. The talent is there, it's about time, they're held accountable, and I hope they're, they're listening, because they, they got to do better than that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. Chairman Wagaspak, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues. Again, there were a lot of conversations taking place as we built up to this over the past year, and I've received a lot of support, but also effort from my colleagues to make these changes with you and with the comptroller, and I really appreciate that effort, because this is a sea change in the way we're looking at some of these financial issues for the first time. And I'm proud to, to work with them to, to make these changes and see a different future for, for everyone here. So this item was approved by the Committee by roll call vote, except that we have a Rule 14 by Alderman Silverstein, and this is on file and should be reflected in the record. This was done by roll call used to establish quorum, but will be placed on file with the clerk.
So ordered.
Thank you. Now, item two is an ordinance authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to provide tax increment financing assistance in the amount not to exceed $850,000 for engineering studies of various grade crossings and other eligible projects on the Milwaukee District Rail Line. This item was approved by the Committee by the roll call vote used to establish quorum, with the exception that Alderman Hairston and Lopez voted no. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chairman Burke? Alderman Burke? On this matter, do you, on this matter, do you wish to be recorded as a yes, or a no, or have you recused? We're using the baseline vote for the Committee on Finance as the baseline for other committee actions. And in the first vote, you, I think, had a Rule 14 recusal. So I'm giving you the opportunity to either stand on that recusal or change that on a going-forward basis for the record.
No, I don't, I don't have a conflict in this matter.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wish to be recorded as no on this item, again.
Thank you. So ordered. And Alderman Burke, then, with that, will be recorded as a yes vote on this item.
Okay. Madam President, item number four is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. Items five and six consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payments of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
No objection, so ordered.
Item number seven consists of an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlement orders, a settlement order in the case of Antoine Galot versus City of Chicago et al. This item was approved by the Committee by roll call vote used to establish quorum, with the exception that Alderman Spazado and Lopez voted no at that time. If no one else wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you again, Madam President. Once again, I'd like to be recorded no on this item.
Alderman Lopez and to others, when the committee chairman acknowledges your no vote, I don't believe that there's necessity, unless you're changing that vote, to identify your no vote again. But that will be noted for the record. Hearing no objection with the no votes that were reported in the committee, so ordered, Chairman Wagaspak.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dowell.
Yes, thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on January 19, 2021, the Committee recommends passage of the following items. A substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2021 within Fund Number 925 for the Chicago Police Department, the Chicago Department of Public Health, the Office of the Mayor, and the Chicago Public Library. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam Mayor, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Dowell. Next up, Committee on Aviation, Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Aviation, for which a virtual meeting was held on Monday, January 25, 2021. Our committee had three items under consideration. The first ordinance 02020-3997. Second Amendment to Phase One Lease. First Amendment to Phase Two Lease. First Amendment Fuel Farm Lease. And Phase Three Lease Agreement with Arrow Chicago, Arrow Distribution, and Arrow Chicago II for cargo facility operations at Chicago-O'Hare International Airport. On that ordinance, Alderman Burke applies Rule 14, abstains on that vote. The next ordinance up, 02020-6243. An amendment in five-year term renewal of intergovernmental agreement among various municipalities in Cook County addressing Midway Airport, excuse me, municipalities, counties, and public school districts addressing O'Hare noise issues raised with the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission. The third ordinance, 02020-6233. An amendment in five-year term renewal of intergovernmental agreement among various municipalities in Cook County addressing Midway Airport noise and monitoring system, establishing noise compatibility. and Monitoring System, Establishing Noise Compatibility Commission. Madam President, these items passed unanimously by the Committee members present, again with the exception of the, the first ordinance, 3997, Alderman Burke applied Rule 14. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move for passage of these items by the same roll call vote as Item Number 1 on the Committee on Finance and the same motion to reconsider if there are no objections.
Point of information, please, Madam.
Who is, who is?
Alderman David Moore, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, Alderman Moore. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Yeah, just, just, just in all fairness and to stay consistent for the ordinance, so people don't feel like they're pointed out, and this was raised before, that when anyone abstains on a Rule 14, the reason is always stated, I think, is in ordinance, and I just want to be consistent, because we hear something like this happen before, and, and someone complained that they was forced to tell their reasons, but others wasn't, and I just want us to make sure we always stay consistent in this council.
My understanding is that the Alderman Burke's Rule 14 recusal is because other members of his law firm worked on this matter.
All right, thank you.
With that Rule 14 recusal in mind, there's a motion pending. Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman O'Shea. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Chairman Vegas.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. We shall have a meeting on January 21st, 2021. Committee recommends passage of the following items. Items 1 through 4 are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. Helen R. Bailey and Russell X, Russell W. Huxhold as members of SSA Number 27, West Lakeview Commission, Terry N. Toy as a member of SSA Number 34, Uptown Commission, and Jared M. Lewis as member of SSA Number 42, the 71st Street Stony Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 5 is an ordinance in support of a Class 7A tax status for property at 6541 South Cicero Avenue in favor of Path 13 Incorporated to execute ground lease for construction of Culver's Restaurant. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 6 is an ordinance in support of Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 825 South Kilpatrick Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 7 is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 4118 and 4128 to 4136 West Lake Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 8 is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 2075 West 43rd Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in opposition to this tax break. I boast my concerns during committee. I'm not going to go into the long drawn out for the sake of time, but I do think that a 9.4 million, $5 million tax break after we just asked taxpayers to increase their property taxes, 95, almost $95 million, questionable and sends a very bad message at this time. I understand it's not in my ward, it impacts my ward, it's right next to it, I am familiar with this location, and I would ask that my colleagues consider that when voting to approve this at this time, and I wish to be recorded as a no on this item.
Your no vote will be recorded. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. This happens to be in the 12th ward. And well, for the record, I believe there are three other incentives that are being considered in this body just today. In 2019, there were 17 throughout Chicago and the suburbs, very successful 6B incentive programs on, in, during those two years. Amazon was awarded $741 million in incentives so they could build more than 23 facilities. These tax incentives are vital tools for economic development in blighted communities, which Back of the Yards happens to be one of them. Developers use these to take on complex projects that would otherwise remain obsolete. We require companies that receive these tax incentives to sign redevelopment agreements with the city. If the company doesn't live up to the agreement, the tax incentive can be revoked. Collectively, we worked hard to adopt legislation to give the city a mechanism to hold those who receive these property tax incentives accountable. These controls will ensure recipients fulfill their commitments regarding investment, jobs, and other factors that we base our support on when approving the incentives. As I mentioned, there's other three incentives. Class L incentive for historic landmark properties at 225 West Randolph, a support at 6B incentive property for 4118 and 4128, 4136 West Lake Street, another tax incentive for 825 South Kilpatrick. Why is this property different? Why the bias? This, another 6B, is simply a economic development tool that my community needs. The property is, meets all the criteria for this incentive lawfully, and the owners employ residents at high wages. Our community needs good paying jobs, especially now. Increasing employment opportunities and the investment to afford is what I'm working on. It's not the only project that I have. A few more will be before this body in the ensuing months. I encourage everyone that's interested to visit the facility. Madam President, I believe some of your team visited the facility. It is modern, it is well done, and it look, future looks bright for Back of the Yards. During the construction phase of this manufacturing warehouse facility, approximately 100 jobs were created. It's about two-thirds leased right now, employing the, the said people. The premises still has 200,000 square foot vacancy, and it is my understanding that an additional 200 jobs could be created as a result of this space when it's fully leased. Due to the significant benefits this facility will continue to have in the 12th ward, I respectfully ask this council to vote in favor of this Class B incentive. You know, we've grown tired of personal agendas in this council, and I know with your vote, each, and one, each one of us will look to the future to ensure that our wards are highly invested, receive the best that they can. I know many of us are doing just that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just wanted to set the record straight as it relates to the comments about the tax breaks that Amazon received. Amazon in my ward has received zero tax breaks. They have no incentives, no TIF, no city subsidies whatsoever, so I just want the record to reflect that you cannot just group Amazon all together, because they didn't receive anything in my ward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. Alderman Vegas, is there a motion?
Madam President, I renew my motion with the exception of Alderman Lopez voting no.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, the last item is an ordinance in support of Class L tax incentive for historic landmark property located at 225 West Randolph Street. This item was substituted in committee, adding a whereas clause containing M and WBE participating, participating, participation language in Section 15 regarding MWBE reporting. That language will serve as a model for future Class L tax incentives, and I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go a little bit out of order in deference to the next Committee Chairman. We will next have the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Chairman Tony.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on January 26th of 2021. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page 1 contains a mayoral amendment of municipal code chapters 17-2 and 17-7 by modifying residential zoning district uses and standards and establishing predominance of the block that's in the 606 district, as well as a brief extension of the 606 demolition moratorium. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page, page 2 contains a mayoral amendment of municipal code chapter 17-7 by adding new section 17-7-0580, establishing a multi-unit preservation pilsen district. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection, noting that Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Lopez, and Alderman Kappelman would like to be recorded, recorded as voting no on this matter.
With those no votes reflected, there's no objections, so ordered.
Pages 1 through 10 contain various map amendments in the 1st, 3rd, 8th, 12th, 15th, 17th, 22nd, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 31st, 32nd, 40th, 43rd, 46th, 47th, 48th, and the 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection, noting that Alderman Burke abstains from voting on document number 02020-4562 for the address commonly known as 1330 through 1364 West Washington Boulevard, 100 through 38 North Ada Street, and 1349 through 1389 West Randolph Street. Alderman Burke previously practiced law with other attorneys in the law firm. Other attorneys in the firm represented Chicago Journeyman Plumbers, Local 130, with the, within the preceding 12 months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessor, Cook County Border Review, Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, and the Circuit Court of Cook County relating to this, to this property. Page 11, I'm sorry. Do I move passage? I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection and noting the Rule 14 recusal, so ordered.
Okay. Page 11 contains the historical landmark designation for the Emmett Till and Mamie Till Mobley House at 6427 South St. Lawrence. My understanding is Alderman Jeanette Taylor would like to say a few words as this is located in her ward.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last year, we celebrated the 65th anniversary of the murder of 14-year-old Emmett Till, and a lot of times, history that happens for African Americans are forgotten about. And so, before there was Trayvon Martin, before there was Eric Garner, there was Emmett Till. And so, we still have a real problem in this country not addressing the brutality that has happened to black folks, but also making sure we apologize and recognize it and do things to move forward. And so, I'm excited that the Emmett Till home is going to be preserved. I want to thank Blacks and Greens, Naomi Davis, and Preservation Chicago for bringing this up, and I'm looking forward to working with this committee, because there are some other historic places in our community that just needs to be recognized. We will repeat history if we don't address it and have those very hard conversations. Today's city council meeting has been very interesting, probably one of the most traumatic for me, city council meeting I had, but honest, these are the hard conversations that we're not willing to have, which is why in this country, we can't move forward. And so, I'm grateful to Alderman Tony. I'm thankful for my community for putting this forth, and I look forward to us having, I look forward to us preserving more historical monuments in our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. Alderman Tony.
I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 contains the historical landmark designation for the Illinois Bell Building at 225 West Randolph Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 also contains the historical landmark designation for the Perkins Nordean House located at 6106 North Kenmore Avenue. I move passage of these, of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 also contains historical landmark fee waivers for the properties located at 1441 North Milwaukee Avenue, 2146 West Pierce Avenue, 11345 South Forestville Avenue, 5801 North Pulaski, and 560 West Fullerton Parkway. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And page 12 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 14th, 20th, 28th, 44th, and 47th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, thank you for your consideration to move out of order. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, the Committee on Education and Child Development, Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Education and Child Development, which held a meeting on January 11th. The Committee recommends the passage of the following item. One, an ordinance authorizing an agreement between Northwestern University regarding My Future Program, 0202-6229. I move that the passage of this item be recommended by the first, first most favorable roll call on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next, the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a meeting on Thursday, January 14th, 2021. To consider one item, substitute ordinance 2020-6200, amendment of the municipal code chapter 11-4 by modifying sections 11-4-120, 11-4-810, and 11-4-2200, increasing fines and penalties for violations of air pollution and emission standards by certain facilities. Recommendation was made to pass, which was concurred by a roll call vote of all committee members with no dissenting votes. If there's no objection, I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next Committee, Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which had a virtual meeting on January 20th, 2021. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. First, the appointments of Sendi Soto and Alyssa Rodriguez, and reappointments of Emilio Carasuelo, Andrew Greer, Arshel Stevens, and Wayne L. Gordon as members of the Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board. I move passage of these appointments and reappointments by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Next, the reappointments of Lisette Castaneda, Sierra Boatwright, Alyssa Herrera, Naisha Niafin, Catherine S. Thonlin, William Towns, as members of the Chicago Community Land Trust Board. Make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 1 is the authorization for acquisition of property in whole or part at 8840, 8844, 8850, and 8854 South Commercial. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 2 is a lease agreement with Better RX Inc. for vacant pharmacy space within 1713 South Ashford Avenue. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item Number 3 is a Second Amendment to lease agreement. Item number three is a second amendment to lease agreement, number two zero two five eight with Heartland International Health Center for clinic office space at eight forty-five West Wilson Avenue on the forty-sixth ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
And just for clarification, this is President Pro Tem Riley in the chair. The mayor does not have a frog in her throat. Hearing no objection, so ordered.
I was going to ask that. Item number four is a new loan with Lazarus Renewal to LLC for rehabilitation of eighteen fifty-seven dash sixty-seven South Pulaski with, with the multifamily program funds. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number five is an amendment for the redevelopment agreements of the third ward Parade of Homes program and others. To acquire, require certain negotiated deposit for purchase into the environmental escrow accounts. Make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And item number six is a negotiated as-is sale of city-owned property at eight forty, I'm sorry, forty-eight forty-one North Lips Avenue to Lips LLC contingent on removal of environmental hazards. And deposit of remediation funds. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Chair, Mr. President.
I think has his hand up.
Yes, Alderman Mitchell.
Alderman Lopez, I would like to be recorded as no on this item. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez, we'll have you recorded as a no.
Okay.
I go by Mitchell.
Just for clarification, Mr. President, I make the same motion if there's no objection with the exception of Alderman Lopez as a no.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Now we'll move on to the Committee on Licensing and Consumer Protection, Chairman Metz.
Thank you. Reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, members of the city council. I am reporting for license committee, held a virtual meeting on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And the following items were passed by the committee. Nine ordinance regarding moratoriums in twelve sixteen, twenty-one, thirty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty and forty-two. I move that the city council incur a new recommendation of the license committee. And pass these items by the same roll call as item number one of the committee on the finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Mayor Lightfoot's now back in the chair.
Thank you, Chairman Metz.
That would conclude my report.
Thank you, Chairman Metz. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President and the city council, reporting for your committee on pedestrian and traffic safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Before the committee, there were, there were a hundred and sixty-two items, there were a hundred and fifty-nine routine items that passed and three routine items that did not pass. There was a substitute ordinance introduced by city clerk Anna Valencia and co-sponsored by wards two, three, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five and fifty. Zero, zero, zero two zero two zero dash six one six nine. An amendment of municipal code, section three dash five six dash zero five zero, extending standard veteran licensed pilot program until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I move passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President and members of city council, reporting for your committee on public safety for which a meeting was held on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Recessed and reconvened on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. There was one item before the committee for which a vote was taken. Item number one was a substitute order, order number twenty twenty dash two forty-one. A call for the superintendent of police to approve a community policing pilot program, Cop House, in the fifth district. This item was recommended due pass by the committee. If there are no objections, I move for the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the committee on finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation, Chairman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the city council. First, I'd like to thank my committee for their attendance, as always, near perfect attendance. Reporting for Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation, for which a meeting was held remotely on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. The following committee, I'm sorry, the committee recommends passes of the following items. Item number one, two zero two zero dash five one eight zero, a grant and use agreement with Lincoln Square, Ravenswood Chamber of Commerce authorizing open space impact fees. For Ainsley Arts Plaza on Lincoln Avenue between Gunnison and Ainsley. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of committee of finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chairman Spazato, before you move on, Alderman Burke, I do see your hand raised. The chair recognizes Alderman Burke. I'm sorry, Alderman Burke, I think you are still muted. Now you're, now you're good.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I heard both the last two chairman asking that the matter be adopted by the first favorable role, role call on the committee on finance. Since I abstained on those, I do not wish to abstain on these matters, so I would like to be shown as voting in the affirmative.
Chairman Burke, the reason you'll call that I ask you after that vote whether or not you wanted to be shown as voting yes going forward. I want to ask to clarify for the clerk that Alderman Burke should be recorded as a yes vote unless he has identified a recusal or affirmatively indicated a no vote for purposes of clarification. And so the record of today's council is clear. Alderman Burke, is that sufficient?
Thank you.
We got it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Item number two, two zero two zero dash six two one five, an expenditure of open space impact funds to open lands for acquisition or reimbursement costs. With Indian Ridge March generally located within one one seven one nine dash one one seven five three South Calhoun. I move to pass recommendation of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Spazato. Next, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Alderman Brookings.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your committee on transportation and public way, a meeting which was held on January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On pages two through twenty include two hundred and twenty-two ordinances for grants of privilege introduced by the local aldermen from wards one through six, eight, ten, fourteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven through thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-two and forty-five through forty-nine. On page twenty-one includes eight ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven and forty-two. On pages twenty-two and twenty-three include one amendment and seventeen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards twenty-two, twenty-six through twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty-four and forty-seven. On page twenty-four includes one re-subdivision ordinance located in the fourth ward. Page twenty-five includes one easement ordinance located in the twenty-fifth ward. And page twenty-five includes one vacation ordinance located in the forty-sixth ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move the passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the committee on finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes the committee reports. Next, matters on the agreed calendar, Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the city clerk Andrea M. Valencia, told us seventy-four items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions from Mayor Lightfoot and the following aldermen. Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Brookings, Alderman Talia Pharoah, Alderman Tony. I move passage of the agreed calendar in the omnibus, please.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President.
New business. Madam Clerk, we'll call the wards beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the committee on finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to committee on zoning, landmarks and building standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to committee on pedestrian and traffic safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to committee on transportation and public way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway, alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Laspada has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three. To allow additional package goods licenses on portion of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Laspada and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapters three dash twelve, five dash twelve and eleven dash twelve. By modifying various sections and adding new sections, five dash twelve dash one forty-one, eleven dash twelve dash zero fifteen and eleven dash twelve dash zero twenty. And adding a new article nine in chapter eleven dash twelve regarding administration of water for all program, which is referred to committee on environmental protection and energy. Alderman Hopkins and Alderman Laszlo has, have a proposed resolution, the call for hearings on reforms for transparent and equitable redistricting process, which is referred to the committee on committees and rules. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapters two dash forty-five and ten dash thirty-two. By modifying various sections and adding new section, ten dash thirty-two dash zero fifty-five concerning establishment and maintenance of managed native garden registry. Which is referred to committee on environmental protection and energy. Alderman Dowell has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles two and nine. By modifying various sections and adding a new section, nine dash twelve dash one twenty, to further regulate operation of vehicles on streets, highways and roadways, which is referred to committee on public safety. Alderman Harris has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the committee on committees and rules for the year twenty twenty, which is referred to committee on the budget and government operations. Alderman Beal and Alderman Lopez have a proposed order to call for the Chicago Police Department to issue a twelve-month no-knock moratorium. Which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the committee on health and human relations and the members of the committee on public safety. Alderman Sylwowski Garza and Alderman Beal have a proposed resolution calling for hearings on operations, funding and staffing composition of Illinois International Port District. Which is referred to committee on economic, capital and technology development. Alderman Sylwowski Garza and others have a proposed resolution calling for the endorsement of pay equity and equal pay for equal work. And urge city colleges to compensate adjunct faculty at pay rates commensural to employees who perform similar work, which is referred to committee on education and child development. Alderman Thompson has proposed ordinance for approval of a plan of Riverside subdivision, which is referred to committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Thompson and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles two, fifteen and seventeen. By modifying requirements for sustainable manufacturing developments, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks and building standards. Alderman Cardenas has proposed resolution to call for municipal employees annuity and benefit fund of Chicago. The Laborers and Retirement Board Employees' Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago. The Policeman's Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago. And the Fireman's Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago to cease new direct investments and divest from direct holdings and combined funds in fossil fuel companies. Which is referred to committee on environmental protection and energy.
Budget.
Two committees having been called, the matters referred to the committee on committees and rules. Alderman Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section seven dash twelve dash two ninety. To increase fines and penalties for cruelty to animals, which is referred to committee on health and human relations. Alderman Lopez also has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds from the Chicago Police Department, item number zero zero two zero, for overtime to the Department of Family and Support Services, item number nine two five three, for early childhood education programs for year twenty twenty-one.
Education.
Two committees, the matter, two committees called, committee on the budget and government operation and the committee on education. The matters referred to the committee on rules. Alderman Moore has a proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as honorary Kalen Prior Way, which is referred to committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Curtis has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter nine dash sixty-four, by adding a new section, nine dash sixty-four dash one thirteen. To allow parking, parking on parkway curbs on portion of West Columbus Drive, South Kenzie Avenue and West Eighty-Third Street. Which is referred to committee on pedestrian and traffic safety. Alderman Curtis also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary Bishop Lucius Hall, which is referred to committee on transportation and public way. Alderman O'Shea has a proposed order for issues of permits for signed signboards at one zero one zero one South Western Avenue. Which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks and building standards. Alderman Secha Lopez has proposed orders for the issued subpermits for signed signboards, which is, which are referred to committee on zoning, landmarks and building standards. Alderman Secha Lopez and others have a proposed ordinance, a proposed resolution, the call for hearings on state of social services, programs and strategies available in addressing increasing violence ahead of post-pandemic spring and summer months. Which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the committee on health and human relations and the members of the committee on public safety. Alderman Maldonado has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three. To disallow additional alcoholic liquor and package goods licenses on portion of West Armidji Avenue, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Maldonado also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of an ordinance by extending the temporary moratorium date for building or demolition permits. And rezoning of residential properties within the six oh six residential area to August first, twenty twenty-one, which is referred to committee on housing and real estate. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two. To allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Carroll Avenue and North Laughlin Street, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burnett also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two. To allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of South Hulse Street, West Gladys Avenue and West Quincy Street, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burnett also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixteen dash zero twenty-three. To allow additional package good licenses on portion of West North Avenue, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issued subpermits for signed signboards, which are referred to committee on zoning, landmarks and building standards. Alderman Irvin and others have a proposed resolution to call for hearings on establishment of city council, city council committee on litigation and risk management, which is referred to committee on rules. Alderman Irvin and others have a proposed resolution, the call for immediate change in protocol regarding Chicago Police Department's execution of search warrants. And release of video footage, passage of civilian oversight measures and establishment of city council committee on litigation review and risk management. Which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the committee on health and human relations and the members of the committee on public safety. Alderman Vegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash six dash two seventy. To modify requirements for application or renewal of related business license. to modify requirements for application or renewal of related business licenses for home occupations, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alman Vegas also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Titles 1, 2, and 4, by adding new chapters 1-26 entitled Chicago Administrative Procedure Ordinance, and modifying Sections 2-51-050 and 4-11-100 concerning powers and duties of Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, and Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events.
Budget.
Two committees have been called, the Committee on Economic and Capital Technology and the Committee on Budget, the matters referred to Committee on Rules. Alman Vegas and others have a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 10-28-13 and 13-20, requiring applicants obtaining public way use and sign permits to provide affidavits affirming nonconviction of treason, sedition, or subversive activities, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Vegas and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Sections 1-23-010 and 1-23-020 regarding ineligible ability to do business with City of Chicago due to removal from public office, treason, sedition, or related offenses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Mitz has a proposed ordinance to transfer funds within the City Council Committee on License and Consumer Protection for the year 2020, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alman Vasquez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Vasquez and others have a proposed resolution calling for the resignation of John Cantazera as president and member of Lodge 7 of Fraternal Order of Police, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 17-7 and 17-9, to modify boundaries of cannabis zone districts and requirements for cannabis business establishments, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of North Sal Drive and West Ontario Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Gardner has a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3801 North Keeler Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And Alvin Haddon has a proposed order for the call for the Chief Sustainability Officer and the Budget Director to prepare reports on the costs needed to reestablish the Department of Environment, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alman Silverstein and others have a proposed resolution for condemnation of U.S. Representative Mary Miller's actions at Moms for America Rally in Washington, D.C. on January 5, 2021, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Your Honor, that concludes the matters referred in the, introduced in the automatic introductions.
Thank you. Alderman Mitchell for approval of the Journal.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any corrections to the Journal or move that it be approved by the same roll call vote that was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Motion is carried. Next, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Next, miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
I provided an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council for Wednesday, February 24, 2021, at 10:00 a.m.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section 1, because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council in accordance with applicable law shall be conducted by a video conference on Wednesday, February 24, 2021, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and shall provide for remote participation or remote viewing by members of the public. If prior to then, the Commissioner of Health issues a written determination that the City Council can safely proceed an in-person meeting, the meeting will be held at a location to be determined that can safely accommodate a City Council meeting. Any such written determination will be posted on the City Clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, which will include a fixed location by 10:00 a.m. on Monday, February 22, 2021. Section 2, this ordinance shall take an effect and be enforced from this day in accurate passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The omnibus, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the same roll call vote as was used to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion that we reconsider each and every of the votes.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Oh, no.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. And Alderman Mitchell, finally, a motion for adjournment.
Due being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn by the same roll call vote that was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The motion is carried, and the council meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.